All right, we're going to call to order the June 5th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight is going to be led by Marty Tuttle.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, liberty and justice for all.
All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel. Who did not write what we conferred with him about?
Sorry about that. To confer with legal counsel on initiation of litigation, no action taken.
Thank you. And to confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with stationary engineers, Local 39, with department heads, unrepresented employees, managers, and specialists and professionals, and no action was taken. All right, so then we're going to proceed to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is, as noted on our agenda, the council is prohibited by state law from taking up items that are brought up under 1A, but it does provide an important opportunity for a public forum on city jurisdiction issues. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other issue tonight to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to assure that everyone gets the chance to be heard, and so to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart that indicates the item that the council is currently considering. We recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety, and so we do ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or applause, or other demonstrations, and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. We take the yellow cards, the speaking request cards, up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular item. So for example, if you're here for item 5, and you want to speak on that item, we take the speaking requests up until the point when the staff has concluded their report on that item. Once the council questions and the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional cards. So please be sure to get the card in before that point. So with that, I have no requests to speak under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolac County Housing Met on May 20th, and really, the only significant action taken was the first implications of the sequestra cuts. In the Housing Choice Voucher Program is a program where the folks pay zero toward the rent, so now they've actually added a minimum rent provision of $25, which a lot of the folks in that income class is huge. So that's effective July 1st, but there's also some hardship exemptions that they can work with. But they're expecting more of these types of increased costs to pass on to folks that can't afford it in the future as these sequestra cuts are being implemented.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johansson. And Mr. Mayor, President Ladesma.
Thank you. I just wanted to report that we had council member, excuse me, Vegas and I attended the City School Two-by-Two Committee meeting on Monday, the 3rd, and we had a couple of presentations. One was with the Liberty Development Team about that Liberty project and proposed school site that would be going in the South Port area. We had a preliminary look at the map that they're proposing, or they're working through, and they're working towards an application. So it was a good venue to get the school district and the city the first sort of look at what they're proposing and the school plan that they have there. Mike Lucan also gave us an update, gave the school district an update on the safe routes to school, and the school crossings update, which was an important part of our discussions at the Two-by-Two back in February. And that's about it.
Very briefly, LAFCO met about 13 days ago, and one of the good things to report back to the council is our city contribution has gone down just a few bucks, but it's headed in the right direction. So we at LAFCO are going through our budgets very carefully and really trying to have as much savings to all the jurisdictions as we possibly can. So that was the major thing that we did at LAFCO.
Thank you, Mr. Kristoff. Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, earlier this evening, the Port Commission met, and we had three items of significance. Actually, the staff presented the Garamendi Water Plan, which I think folks have maybe heard, is the response to the Bay Delta Conservation Plans. We got an update on the status of that and the effects it would have should that come to fruition. And then we also received a presentation on the next two-year budget, as well as a presentation on the update of the port's business plan. That was it.
All right, and a couple of reports. I attended the Mayor's Innovation Summit in Philadelphia two weeks ago. This is a national summit of mayors, some of the major technology and telecommunications companies in the country. Google and Comcast were the two primary sponsors, along with a network of hackers, coders, the kind of tech innovation sector across the country. Two dozen of us were there, two dozen mayors were there from across the country. I also brought, not at the city's expense, one of the local civic groups that's working in this space as well, on the development of kind of mobile apps, civic apps, and other sorts of innovative technologies that we identified in the city's strategic plan for this year and next in terms of planning and preparation. It was actually a really good session, got both some good ideas, not that we've been short on those, but a lot of interest and contacts from some of the major companies and also some of the national organizations and outfits that are in this space that are looking for cities like ours that don't have, you know, 20 people innovation offices to start to look at how to deploy the kind of civic technology on a broad scale in sort of middle-sized cities across the country like ours. So it was a good session. There'll be a follow-up session at the mayor's annual meeting later this month. The Streetcar Policy Steering Committee met this morning at CalStir, which was hosting us, and a couple of items from that meeting. We took up a proposed minor, a set of minor revisions to the alignment. The revisions are all on the Sacramento side of the line, and they include better clarity around exactly where the line will run at the intermodal facility. So the intention now is, well, not the intention, the line will be between the actual intermodal building and the track. So essentially, I mean, probably the easiest way to think about it is where we used to get on the train at the Amtrak station, that would be roughly where the streetcar line would run. So that was one of the key pieces. And then some changes in station location and routing around the proposed arena, all pretty minor. And then moving the west end of the loop around the convention center in Midtown to 12th Street instead of 13th Street to preserve both the 13th Street bikeway essentially and the convention center's plans for some modifications to improve their bike and walk access, as they punch K Street all the way through. So nothing significant, but one positive element of that is they're very seriously now, you know, getting their alignment in place in a way that we don't have to tell the Federal Transit Administration, you know, generally, we want to go from here to there, and we'll tell you later, once you give us $100 million, you know, where it'll be. We need to get to this increasing level of specificity about where the line's going to be, so that was positive. We also received the preliminary economic impact analysis for the streetcar project, and you'll recall, we commissioned this for a variety of reasons, partly just to make sure that we're doing this for the right reasons. We need to do it for the federal process, and certainly, as we move to the financing plan, we need to have a sense of where and what scale of impacts in terms of economic benefits and costs there are. The analysis came back with sort of the bottom-line economic impact of $1.2 billion in benefits accounted for by increases in property values and new development and increases in retail sales. Those are the primary drivers of that number. It's important to note that that number is essentially driven entirely within the three-block corridor of the streetcar route, so it's a very tight, in part because we're looking towards the potential for its application of the financing plan. And so this is not one of those like sports facility multiplier effect things, whereas a $20 billion benefit for spending five bucks, it's not that. We were trying to come up with a framework that would allow us then to start saying, okay, now that we've done this analysis, what does the financing plan look like? But that $1.2 billion translates into about just under $700 million in benefits on the Sacramento side of the river, and just under $500 million on the West Sacramento side of the river. Although, I think you've all heard me, at least before, say, I think that's kind of a fantasy way of thinking about these issues. You know, if somebody goes from here and eats dinner in Sacramento and then comes back here and has a drink, you know, how you score who won and who lost, and who was that benefit to is kind of silly. But anyway, but we did it. So that's the rough distribution. But the bottom line is, it's a gigantic benefit, economic benefit, that's private sector benefit, on both sides of the river. So in terms of a go-no-go, it's a large benefit for both. That includes roughly, I think the forecast was that of the new development that would be induced by the streetcar, roughly two-thirds of that would be on the west side, and the other third would be in the city of Sacramento. But the reason why that's different from, and sort of the flip side of the total benefit number, is that the increase in property value for existing developments would be greater on the Sacramento side, and there's just more development there. So for both, and that analysis was done, is broken out by residential, commercial office, as sophisticated as it can be. Essentially, what they've done is modeled the market and the trends in the general catchment area, and then simultaneously looked at a partial-by-partial analysis. But simultaneously, but independently, to check against the trends so that they were able to verify that there was sufficient capacity for vacant and underutilized properties to accommodate that level of development increase, and there's more than enough for that. So the property tax and sales tax increases, I think, if I remember correctly, were roughly about $3.5 million total annually to the two communities. Based on those other figures, that's roughly, you know, 40%, one-third to 40% West Sacramento and the rest Sacramento. So it was a really useful preliminary report. They're going to, the reason it's preliminary is that we want them to go back and do what they can to try to incorporate, update their assumptions around the arena project. It's a transit modeling, it's a transit economic impact firm, so they're not going to do a full-blown analysis of the arena, but they are going to be trying to model some of their, and update some of their assumptions to account for the fact that the arena is on the way. So that was positive, and it was well-received by all the parties, including the commercial property owners on both sides of the river, which is in some cases, one person. And also by both councilmember Hanson and councilmember Cohen from the city of Sacramento. So I thought that was positive. Councilmember Johansson was there as the alternate for Mr. Ladesma, representing us too. So that was a big deal. What will happen next, that will get refined, we'll get the final economic analysis, and then that'll be part of the work towards starting to develop the actual financing plan. All of that with the intention of, you know, trying to move forward with, to get a full-blown application in process at the FTA for the Small Starts Program quickly. So at the meeting, you know, asked our project manager team at Secog, when, okay, so when can we, when are we going to hear the trains? And so, I mean, the range is, you know, if everything went to plan and we worked as aggressively as possible, you know, roughly fall of 2017, obviously, that requires a lot of things to go exactly right, but that's, which has its challenges for the arena project, but at least it does, you would be, while you're cursing the world for not being able to get into the arena for that first year, you would at least be able to see that somebody, we are working on trying to solve this problem, but it's just not possible to, given the federal process, it's not possible to get the project fully constructed and in operation by October of 2016. All right. We haven't had a Secog board meeting since our last council meeting, but we did close out May's Bike Month, and West Sacramento, we moved way up the roster this year. We're ninth in the region in total miles biked, which is quite good, but when you adjust for per capita, we're fifth in the region per capita miles. And when you look, actually, what really kind of matters the most in terms of the regional plan stuff, at miles, non-recreation, miles that aren't just pure recreation, like, okay, so did you avoid using the car? We're in the top four, and then that's not even close to the fifth one. So the sort of the regional family of bike cities is really Davis and Sacramento and us, and I can't even remember whether that's Auburn or Placerville, but those are the four, and then there's a big gap until you get to Rancho Cordova and some of the others. So it's a sea change and a big cultural change around our community, and I think a lot of folks, even inside West Sacramento, but certainly externally, are been surprised at how much with modest improvements in infrastructure, biking has really taken hold here, so West Act did really well for the month. Yep. So, all right. We have no appointments to boards or commissions tonight, so we're now with the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 15. And we have a memo at the desk from the city manager with minor changes to agenda item 4, as well as, that's it, that's the only one I consent. Oh, I'm looking at the same document twice. All right, so are there any items on consent to remove, or any items for separate question or comment?
6 and 12.
Okay, so item 4 is, which I pulled, is consideration of contract with Bureau Veritas North America for Building and Development Engineering Division services. So the key question we've had on this each time it's come forward is around our customer evaluations of the service, because we don't, because it's not our team, we don't get the same kind of feedback. Is that, and I didn't see clearly in the communications, coordination and review section, that, you know, we'd had consultation with users or customers or with the chamber, any of that. Has that occurred? Are we continuing to do the surveys and the customer feedback and that sort of thing that lets us know that the Bureau Veritas is providing the kind of level of service and customer orientation that we would be providing if we were doing this in-house?
Yeah, we still have the customer surveys that people can voluntarily fill out, and I can say that the feedback has been positive over the last couple of years. The chamber actually had a representative participate on the selection committee, and I haven't received any feedback other than positive from the chamber on Bureau Veritas' customer service.
And the trends on the customer, on the surveys are stable and positive?
Positive, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item 6 is consideration of award of contract for landscape maintenance of landscaping lighting districts to Domingo's Landscape. Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah. Bob, I just, I need a little help with the math. How many years is this? Is this a two-year plan?
It's two-year with an option to renew the third year.
Okay, so if it's $53,000 for the first year, and so 53, it comes out to 106, how do we get to the 183 number?
It's a good question. I'll have to go back and do the math.
Okay, all right, okay, okay. I just couldn't figure out how I got to 183 unless, and then I even started adding the 8,000 from the change orders, and that still didn't work, so I just couldn't figure it out. Thank you.
Will you come back in a second?
While I do the math?
Mm-hmm. All right. Or is Aaron here?
Marty knows. Yeah, where's Aaron?
It's got a bunch of help back there. Chris informs me that it's the contingency for each year that is kind of cumulative and gets to that number. I'm happy to go back and check the math, if you'd like, but...
Well, the contingency, the contingency, I have to assume, is the 7,900...
Correct. What she did is she added contingency for each year, so it'd be that 7,800 for each year, or 7,900.
Okay. All right.
Including the third year, if you guys approve the third.
So that's a third year.
So it'll be three years at $7,900.
I got it. And yet, we have the three years at 79, and...
Two, three years at 53.
Three years at 53?
Yep.
Three years, it has to be three years.
It has to be three and three.
Three years at 53, three years at 7900.
Okay, all right, I got it. Thank you. Thank you much.
I actually had a question on it. Mine's a lot easier, it requires no math, so you'll be fine. You'll be fine.
I'm glad.
And the reason I ask on this item, although it doesn't necessarily pertain, but this is probably the best venue, and that's all I'm going to finagle the question, is I noticed in other lighting and landscape districts, or agenda items that we have a little bit further down on the agenda, there's a reference to the fact that staff manages those water systems in the lighting and landscape districts in many cases. So is this one, staff going to be managing the water systems? And the reason I ask that is because it looks like this lighting and landscape district just doesn't quite, it cuts off right at West Cap and Jefferson, right on the corner there, but if you go just south of West Capital on Jefferson in front of Walgreens, it's just, it's a mess, and I don't know, there must be a different contract, or it's, because it's not part of this one. And the reason I bring it up is because there appears to be no water at all, and the grass is dead, and the trees are falling apart. And I know that the community development director was pretty excited about the landscaping that was going to go in initially when Walgreens went in, and it's in disrepair, it's kind of a mess, and this is an important corner, and I know we made a huge investment on West Capital Avenue with all the landscaping, so I know, I don't expect you to have an answer, but I just wanted to raise it because I think this is, this one, although it didn't include it, it butts right up to it, and so I would just ask to see if we can do some checking in to see who's responsible for that maintenance there, because it's, like I said, it's fallen apart, it looks crappy.
Sure, yeah, happy to do that.
Great, thank you.
All right. Item 10 is consideration of Resolution 13-30 authorizing amendments to the Regional Water Authority Joint Powers Agreement. Mr. Vegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question, just trying to figure out, how involved are we with it, and what is our cost associated with it? Because I know we, at one point, were kind of rethinking what our involvements with some of these were, and then we kind of went back into it. So, and I don't know if anybody represents on the...
Yeah, Mr. Kristoff is our representative on the air.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know what, this is the one. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, ask a question. I mean, Dan and I, we've had this discussion, because I had some real reservations like you. But I mean, we're getting a net benefit. It is something that is beneficial as far as the city of West Sacramento is concerned, and so we've had that discussion, and when I saw this on here, I just wanted to continue to push it forward, because, I mean, we spend a little money with this regional water authority, but I mean, at the same time, it's, we receive much more benefit than we do with the expenditure.
Okay, good enough. And I think the policy changes makes sense, but I just wanted to understand a little more about our involvement, but I know, that's right, but you've been representing.
Explain a little bit about, as far as metering and all that other kind of stuff that they're working with us.
Right, we routinely go in with, our RWA goes together, all the agencies go together, and they get grants for water meter installation. We've actually received half a million dollars from that. We also use their water efficiency program to comply with our water conservation measures, which is a large portion of what we use RWA for, for the city. So we can, I can give you the breakdown if you'd like it, but we far outweigh the benefit, the benefit far outweighs the cost of the programs.
Got it. Love hearing that. Okay, good enough. Thank you so much for that.
All right. Item 11 is consideration of the city's application to become a bicycle-friendly community. Mr. Vegas.
Just a quick question on this one as well. Typically, under these kinds of things, under the heading of coordination and review, you'd find what other departments within the city's organization we've consulted with, and it would seem to me, in terms of this application, we want to coordinate with the police department, because ultimately, they're going to be the ones that would have to, and I brought this up before, I think, you know, our bicycle plan is only going to be as good as people are safe using their bikes, and I want to, I don't think we need to be militant necessarily in our approach. I think the police department's done a good job of providing warnings to people who are riding cross-busy signals without stopping and riding wrong directions at night with no lights, those kinds of things that are hazardous for everybody involved, but I think we want to make sure that we're coordinating with the police department as we apply for these types of things in the future, because it's, they're going to be a critical extension of our supporting, the responsibility of becoming successful in our application. All right, great. That was it. Thank you.
So I totally, you know, I launched on the same topic in the master plan, I totally agree. And as we, well, not just we, but as the country moves from cycling being something for the cool kids and the hipsters and the athletes to something that everyone does, it has to have, I mean, even though for many of those communities, the idea of rules is anathema, we have to have them. I mean, it's, I'm a biter, and there's constantly people riding the wrong way, and that's more of a problem, actually, I think, in the north part of the city than in the south part of the city. But the problems of going through intersections, which seems totally fine, but if we approach that for every, even pedestrians have to stop and are supposed to go to the corners, and we do enforce it. We need to have, as the bicycle-friendly community guidelines have, sort of equitable policies about law enforcement, and then start applying them for everybody's safety and to create the idea that the laws do matter. This is not just something to do, bicycling is not mainly a form of social protest or for anarchy. It is a way of getting around and enjoying the community that you live in. So I totally agree with that. We need to do the same kind of training for motorists and for pedestrians. All three have their problems and their quirks, well, we are all three of them, and in every capacity, we're unfair to the other. So I think we do need to work on that, it's definitely part of this process as well. So you think we would qualify the bronze level?
That's kind of my, on their initial assessment, and looking through the graphic at the end of the staff report, kind of puts us in the range. I would suspect a pretty solid bronze.
So what are the sort of, maybe the lower mid-hanging fruit areas that would move us to silver?
And then gold, if you're at it.
I'm glad you've been here for five minutes. Now I want to go to silver.
The big key to moving to gold is they want to see some of the more innovative infrastructure used on the ground, and we don't have anything like a separated cycle track or contraflow bike lanes or some of the new industry standards that are coming out.
But you're already ahead of me. I was thinking about silver, actually, not gold.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I messed them up.
But...
So what are the sorts of things that we would, if we wanted, if we were, because we do, if we were to implement our bicycle master plan, but of those elements that would get us to a silver level, what are some of those things that would get us, move us up?
Two of the areas that I identified that we don't have, one would be an active bicycle advisory committee is one suggestion. We also, education component for motorists and cyclists is a key component of that as well. Complete streets ordinance is also something on here we don't have yet. I know that's in the works.
No, I don't want a bicycle committee. Okay, that's not worth silver.
These are staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donery.
Thank you.
All right. Item 12 is consideration of presentation on potential impacts of the Garamendi Water Plan. Mr. Kristoff.
I guess you guys have been through this once already. So I guess what I couldn't quite figure out is why this was a presentation, but yet, at the same time, it's on consent. I didn't quite get it. I'll tell you what I can do, though.
He's got a number for you.
Because this is a stupid plan. Okay, as far as West Sacramento is concerned, this is really, really dumb. But at the same time, I'll get with the city manager, and we can, we'll talk about, you know, some of the points that he's trying to make and the reason it won't work as far as West Sacramento is concerned, and so, but I was just trying to figure out why this was on consent rather than... to figure out why this was on consent, rather than an agendized item.
Right.
And I sort of figured it out when you planned, when the Port Commission...
Yeah, it was actually requested by the Port Commission, so we felt it at least informed the rest of the council as a consent.
And so I'll get informed when I talk to the city manager.
But the Port Commission is, is directed the chairman to send a letter on this topic, which we are, I mean, depending on what we, our assessment of the, what would be the most effective, either we should sign on behalf of the city as well, or send a equivalent letter, I think. I mean, that, so I would suggest we amend this item to do that.
Okay.
I, I was gonna say, I would recommend that we have a separate letter from the city to articulate our opposition to what's proposed, it's just, I think we, yeah.
Well, I didn't know if I spoke out of turn, as far as being a good thing or a bad thing, I was, okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, so those are all the questions on consent. So with that amendment to item twelve, and the city manager's proposed change to item four, is there a motion on consent? Moved by Mr. Johansson, and second by Mayor Protemble Desma. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, hearing, no motion carries. Item sixteen is a public hearing and report of Measure K revenue and dispersments.
There they go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Natacha Sharma with City Finance. This is our tenth year of our Measure K report presentation. Measure K requires the city to publish an annual report following a public hearing. Included in your packet is a Measure K scorecard and a full report on Measure K that we are planning to publish. The Measure K scorecard provides funds to be allocated to programs according to Council Resolution zero two fifty-eight adopted in February of two thousand and three pursuant to our guidance as approved in the advisory Measure J. The scorecard demonstrates that staff adheres to council's direction. The scorecard is broken into two parts, base part and capital component, base component and capital component. The base component is the quarter cent of the half cent, and the capital component is the other portion. For base component, we are allocating funds as needed. For example, in two thousand and nine, we allocated funds for the Yolo County Library. That's when the new library was built, and this allowed the library to be open on Sundays for additional four hours, and with full programming. So on the scorecard, if you see, we have the public safety and water rate reduction that were greater than the cumulative annual funding range. And the reason is for public safety was increase in personnel cost, and for, we didn't increase the number of personnel, but the cost of personnel just went up, plus and everything else. And for water, we had a housing boom between two thousand and one and two thousand and seven, and that was substantial, so we are still spending quite a bit of more money than our annual funding. So hopefully, future revenues will offset that. The second part of the report is the capital portion. Most of the capital program was actually done as part of the accelerated road rehab project in two thousand and three that was adopted. We are to our last project, the Westfield Road Rehab, that we're gonna finish this year. The capital portion of the revenue actually allowed the city to leverage other funding source. If you look in the report, to date, we have leveraged about eight-point-four million dollars, and which is about thirty-five percent of the total Measure K funds. Measure K capital portion has expired as of March thirty-first, and now has continued with the passing of Measure U and V. Measure U allows the continuation of the sales tax override, the quarter cent, for an additional twenty years, and Measure V allows, it's an advisory measure for the funds to be used for streetcar operations and flood program. We are, we're planning to publish this report in the local newspaper, the News Ledger. A copy of the report will also be available at the city clerk's office, in the library, and also on our city website. This concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I'd like to request an opening of public hearing.
All right, Mr. Kristoff?
Well, first of all, thank you for putting this report together and making sure that it gets out to the public, because that was one of the promises that we had made. And so I, you guys need kudos for that, because we're continuing to show that, you know, the public supports us, we're going to keep our word as far as what, what we said. Measure K's running a slight deficit.
Yes.
Okay. And what's causing that deficit? Is it the, is it the water reduction allocation?
It's actually the revenues. Measure K, we estimated about approximately five million dollars in annual revenues, Measure K revenues, but last few years, we've been receiving less than that because of the economic downturn. And Measure K revenues is actually, it's the place of sale, the way the goods are delivered to, so we haven't been getting that much in delivery and stuff, so, you know, like in purchases. So that actually was a cost for the revenue, but we have seen this year, where it's gonna actually meet or exceed budget by a little bit. So in future years, according to our sales tax consultant, we'll be pretty much hitting, we won't have hopefully any deficit according to this budget that we are putting together today.
Should we tweak some of the expenditures to make sure that we maintain the integrity of the, of the deficit?
At this point, I probably won't say we need to make any recommendations, because we have about two-point-four million in fund balance and cash balance that will help us with hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, I think, the average deficit for each year, so will be sufficient enough for at least next two years, which will be presented as part of the budget too.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions before we open the public hearing?
Nope. Just a quick comment, thank you very much. As Bill said, he said it right. I mean, this is a great reminder of our commitment, what we made years ago, to say that this is how the money was gonna be spent, and we would do an annual report, and we would produce it, and make sure that folks could see exactly what we did with the money. So thank you.
Johansson?
Yeah, I would agree. This is a good example of transparency that I think makes a tax like this palatable, and it will make it palatable for the future as long as we've recollected this asset. Now, this is just, out of, I mean, we've been doing this report for quite some time on Measure J and K. Have you all had any public comments coming in from the publishing of this? Has there been any feedback on that at all?
No, actually, I haven't heard any comments on this. You know, we've been just following the guidelines, but we haven't, I haven't actually heard any, so I'm not sure if city manager's office has heard.
Yeah, I haven't heard, I think, I think you're doing a good job at, at publishing this, and it goes a long way.
All right, we're gonna open the public hearing then on this item. We have no request to speak, but it's a public hearing, so does anyone wish to address the council on this item? All right, seeing none opposed to the public hearing.
No, I just wanted to, as well, thanks for putting the report together, and just looking at the amount of projects we've funded through this has been, it shows that, as Council Member Kristoff said, we're, we're keeping to our word, and not just reporting it, but we're doing the work we said we'd do, in alignment with this, with what we outlined on the, on the measures. So I appreciate you putting this together.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, it's kind of remarkable that three of us were here when this thing was passed, and it's one of those items, when he said it's gonna sunset in ten years, and people are like, well, nobody's gonna be around then, and we're still here. But what's, what has, I mean, we've been talking about the transparency, which is really critical, but as a result of this, you know, all of the high priority roads in the, in the city have, have been resurfaced at one point or another during the period of, of Measure K. We have, you know, a first-rate library that's open for more than three minutes a day. I mean, we've, the benefits to the community from the, from these investments are, are very tangible and very clear, and, and both in terms of the transparency and the council, you know, and every budget cycle has been very insistent that it, despite your best efforts, we're not going to allow these monies to bleed into the basic administration, administrative functions of the city, or to supplant the existing resources. I'm gonna raise this, actually, when we get later into the, like the budget request for emission control vehicle compliance. That's not a Measure K expenditure. Measure K was, Measure K was essentially saying that we've, we've made a lot of improvements in part of the city, because we have a development, development impact fees, we have a whole city we need to take care of. And so what we want, what we're asking taxpayers to do is to make these investments to upgrade the quality of life, not to, not to buy out any of the rest of our budget. And so we need to be, we have been hawkish on this from the whole, from day one. No, you're not, you're not doing those kind of equipment replacements, and none of that, so it's gonna come up again in the budget, but we've done a good job, I think, to this point of making that occur. The one area, the one quibble, it's not, I don't think it's in the, in the, in the report that you have to the public, but in ours, the, but the description of the water and the public safety amounts being, you know, dramatically over what the allocations were. I mean, those really are the two drivers of the, of the whole thing. And you describe them both as being driven by residential growth between two thousand and one and two thousand and seven, and that's true on the water rate side. It's not really, I mean, it's not true on the public safety side. I mean, we made, we made judgments, I mean, part of it is, as you say, a compensation and that sort of thing, but we also made judgments about spending money. And we may say that we did that because it was, we needed to expand services, but the water rate one was out of our control. I mean, once we said, we're making the rate, we're buying the rate down by this much, as more people moved in, that was just an automatic draw on Measure K. And so I do think it's important, and, because this, more than anything, has to be fully transparent, that we, that we be very clear about what, what we did in that, in that instance. I don't think anybody in the community would quibble with the fact that we've made investments in public safety equipment, but we should say what, we should say it as, as what it really was.
I'd just follow up a little bit on that, from some of the questions that people have asked earlier. When we first passed this, we did get questions on it. People were wondering where their sales tax dollars were going. And I think as, as you guys have, have reported this year after year after year, people have gotten comfortable. They've gotten comfortable with, well, you know, they're not overspending on this, or they're not overspending on that. And these are going for, you know, a whole wide range of issues. It's like the mayor said, they're just, they're just little issues that just make the quality of life in West Sacramento a little bit better. And, you know, there, there are park and recreation issues in there, there are childcare issues in, there's just a whole bunch of things that, a little bit of something goes towards those particular kinds of services. And so I think that, that people very, very much support this. And, and one of the reasons is, is because of the way you report it, and have been reporting it for so long.
If I may just... Mayor Protemble Desma?
Thank you. Just, the part that got me about reading through the report is just, you know, I was not on a council in two thousand and four and two thousand and five, obviously, but you see that it, the projects are complete, they're done, you know, the stuff is done. And I think that's this, to your point, people don't realize that we spent, you know, some of the money was spent on the tower bridge widening for wider sidewalks, which people use now all the time. On, you brought it up, the Bright Fitness, of course, I'm gonna happen to look at it now, done, installed in September two thousand and five, done. So it's just a wonderful sort of punch list of things we went around the city and said, these are improvements we have to make. And so it's, hats off to the council at that time for having the foresight to get this down, and for you to keep in, up the reporting.
I do think, you know, as we go forward now in the new, in this, in version two, under Measures U and V, that the base allocations, we, I mean, although we were brilliant in two thousand and two, I mean, the things have changed. And so, you know, taking another look at that and saying, given our current strategic plan, given what's happened on redevelopment, and given, you know, given the changes in the last decade, and there have been a couple, you know, we should make sure that our, our base allocations align with, with where we are today. So, not, not for tonight, but perhaps as a follow-on to next year's strategic plan, you know, identification of priorities, that's a good time to do it. But I think, there's no reason we should consider this, that the base allocation is, you know, at the percentage level set in stone for, for all time. The only, the only question I had is on the, the Amazon sales tax revenue, is that, do we collect that? So that's, that's at point of delivery, but does that, does that count in, do district taxes count in that, or are they, are they paying that tax only on, at the statewide rates?
You know, I'm actually not sure if they are, if we're collecting it. We haven't had a recent, because that actually was just passed, the Amazon thing, so it's too new to us. We haven't had the analysis yet, so.
All right. I mean, partly, it raised my, I mean, it came in my head because of this relative spike in the district sales taxes, which is point of delivery, versus regular sales taxes, which is point of sale.
Sale.
And so, just to be careful that we don't, because, you know, that's, that's a non-trivial part of today's economy, is online sales. And so we need to be sure that we don't misinterpret that policy change as being a change in long-term growth in the sales tax, because that's a one-time, I mean, it's a permanent one, but it's a one-time permanent bump. So, okay. All right, so is there a motion to direct the staff to take the action that's identified in the report?
I moved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protemble Desma, second by Mr. Kristoff. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, hearing, no motion carries. Item seventeen is approval of City of West Sacramento Resolution thirteen dash thirty-three, and West Sacramento Financing Authority Resolution thirteen dash thirty-four, authorizing the issuance of the Water Revenue Bonds Series twenty thirteen, the execution and delivery of related documents, and approving other related actions. Mr. Blumberg?
Well, as we reported to you on, on May eighth, we have a great opportunity to refund the outstanding two thousand and three water revenue bonds, which have about twelve years left on them. What we reported to you is still true, that the savings will be substantial, double-digit. And, you know, we, we are looking at, you know, asking for your authorization tonight to issue these refunding bonds, but also, we're, we're looking at generating some new money out of those savings. In other words, we have a number of improvements to the water system that are proposed, and you'll actually be seeing those later tonight when you consider the CIP budget. But, you know, we, we expect to generate about two million in, in new money out of, out of that refinancing. And, and so, you know, we are, you know, cautious about the market. You know, this is one of those deals where we don't have a deal with a, a bank to do a private placement or anything like that. We have to go out into the marketplace, and the marketplace is in flux right now. We've got a lot, a bunch of things going on. Last week, Ben Bernanke mentioned that he, they may consider ending the quantitative easing, which caused the market to, to jump thirty basis points, you know. So, you know, with a cautionary note that the market's in flux, but, you know, right now, the savings look really strong. We believe that we'll be able to get two million in new money. We are, you know, as we always say, we are not going to extend the term of the debt beyond twelve years. We are not going to see any increase in debt service payments from that new money. It's all gonna be generated by the savings. And so what we hope to do is, we're gonna be going to SMP in about a week. We hope to do pre-pricing by the end of the month, and then we would close this deal in early July. So with that, that's our presentation, if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Paul, does, do these types of transactions enhance our credit rating?
Well, let me respond. You know, each time we go forward, they reconsider the, the credit, and the credit is, in this case, our Water Enterprise Fund. We, we, we would like to see an improvement in our credit. We think we're an A-plus utility. You know, right now, we're rated A, but we would like to see an increase in that, that credit rating. So we'll do our best in a couple weeks.
Are there questions?
Paul, with the, with the recent increase in interest rates, does that affect the net present value savings?
It, it really does, and in fact, it will have gone down, you know, right now, we got new numbers this morning from Southwest Securities, and net present value savings looks like it would be about eleven-point-four percent. So, you know, those increases in the municipal bond rates definitely affect our savings. But things are gonna fluctuate between now and when we close, or when we go to market and pricing in early July, so we're, you know, we keep our fingers crossed.
All right. Are there questions or discussion?
Just a comment, thank you, Paul. So for the cost, with the exception of the fees associated with the refinance, I mean, this is a huge deal to be able to turn this around without increasing, you're not, you're not extending the term, you're not increasing the, the payment, the cost associated with doing the business, and you're gonna save two-hundred thousand dollars a year through the maturity. I mean, that's, that's, that's huge. That's a big deal. I mean, that's, that's, and you know, you keep bringing these to us, but we'll, I'll continue to say certainly that this is a big deal. I mean, to be able to turn this around, given what we're gonna take up the very next item in terms of our budget, this, this certainly contributes to creating a healthy, strong economy here in West Sacramento. So thanks, thanks, it's good work.
All right, follow that up with a couple of key words?
I will move the item. I will move the item.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Viagis and Second by Mr. Ledesma. All those in favor please say aye. Any opposed, turned down, motion carries. Thank you. Item 18 is consideration of revisions to economic development treatment, capacity bank sewer credits program guidelines, and allocation of unused credits. Ms. Richards.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Following direction that we received at the April 10th council meeting, we've revised the program guidelines to address catalyst projects in priority focus areas like the Bridge District, the Washington Plan Area, Central Business District, and also to ensure that we have credits for the Riverfront Hotel, as well as preserving credits for restaurants, since that was a big focus, and still is a big focus for us here in the city. So we've made those changes to the guidelines, and we've also proposed a change to the restaurant, the maximum credits allowed for restaurants. And the staff report, I do want to point out an error in the staff report, there is a clerical error in the staff report where we asked, in recommendation two, for you to allocate credits, should you accept this policy. And we did mention that the two pending applications that we had, both one for Wicked West Pizza, number two at Riverpoint, and also an Indian cuisine restaurant on West Capitol Avenue, they are requesting 8.74 credits and 7-point credits, 7.02 credits. And the staff report did not articulate how many credits we were recommending there that you allocate. And so we are actually requesting your consideration of allocating what is requested for those two restaurants, prior to adopting the new guidelines that would limit restaurants to five credits, because those applications were pending before those guidelines were proposed. So we're looking for your feedback on that, as well as the proposed, proposed guidelines in general. And I wanted to call your attention to a memo that was provided by the city manager that addresses the recalculation of what would be remaining, should you choose to do that. There would be about 15 credits remaining for future restaurants and retail, public food serving uses, which is another use that we would like to identify as eligible uses in this new, in these new guidelines. That concludes my remarks, and I'm happy to answer questions.
All right, are there questions for staff at this time?
Somebody speak.
All right. Okay, Mr. Johansson.
Where, where is the location of the Indian cuisine restaurant?
It'll be located at 3025 West Capitol Avenue, which is in that shopping center. It's called Big R or Country West Shopping Center. It's where the La Favorita Taqueria is. It'd be right next door to La Favorita Taqueria. It's, it's in a, with the existing guidelines, it's in the primary restaurant focus area, which was, which included that area of West Capitol Avenue at Harbor. So per the existing guidelines, it is, it is a targeted restaurant area. And Riverpoint, the Riverpoint property is actually in the citywide restaurant area, so they technically meet the guidelines that we have in, in place right now.
All right, do you have more requests to speak on this? H.J. Tendak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As a resident, I wanted to voice my support for the continued promotion of local restaurants. I happen to live right next to downtown Sacramento, I'm right by the Ice Street Bridge there, however, so I have a kind of a different sphere that I have that access. But every time that I want to eat in town, you know, it's the same folks that have been here for 20 years, and then two new ones, so I certainly appreciate the, the direction, although it's not really new for this. As a business owner, I'm trying to open Bike Dog Brewing Company in the next couple of months, and I'm hoping for, been working with staff, but hoping for the ability to access a couple of those extra credits in this retail and public food serving components. The Egyptians consider beer food, I don't know that we're necessarily considering that any longer. However, we do, are going to work with our mobile vendor friends, as well as the spokes like the Eatery to get food on-site, but not to impact our, our need to go through the Health Department. So, wanted to voice my support for the, the future direction of this, and looking forward to hopefully being able to access a couple of those credits. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, Diane, do we have a policy that 40 credits are a maximum?
Currently, that is the maximum for catalyst project. Actually, it's the maximum for all catalyst projects.
But yet, hotel and conference centers, 100?
In these proposed guidelines, we're eliminating a max, the maximum for catalyst projects.
Okay, okay. In garden park apartments, why do they need 20 additional credits?
They requested 106 credits, and 40 were granted on April 10th. And this proposal is requesting council consideration of an allocation of additional 20 for, for the catalyst, but also because, I believe in future phases of garden park, there is a proposed market barn, farmer's market use that would be a food serving use, that would have retail food consumption within it. And I believe that was also another criteria that would allow the council to assign additional credits to it.
But what if that doesn't materialize?
That's, that's a good question. I think, under the catalyst criteria right now, the 40, the additional 20 would be allowed under the catalyst criteria, so that, that's within your purview, if you should adopt these guidelines.
And in Ms. Richards' defense, we, I think we, we directed staff to come back with new guidelines that would allow us to, that would allow us to, with a clear conscience, allocate the additional 20. So I think it was, it was our idea.
The other, the other question is, is, is you talked in here as far as other jurisdictions, and we're, that it is, are we looking at purchasing additional sewer credits, or we were going to sell other jurisdictions sewer credit at a price of $1,462?
We were attempting to obtain additional credits from cities that have abundant amount, an abundant amount of credits that they know they're not going to use. And we were, we thought we were going to be successful doing that until this, the regional district actually offered all the cities an incentive to purchase all their remaining credits in advance of, of them being used at 1,462 per credit. So that windfall to some of those cities was, you know, too, too, too good to, to pass up, and so that, that sort of eliminated the option that we have.
In the garden park apartments, where are they located?
In the Bridge District.
No, I know, but what, what part?
It's on, right, right around the park. Is it Water Street, River Street?
You know where Rivermark is?
Yeah?
It's, it's just to the, it's just to the south, east of Rivermark.
Sort of, yeah, sort of catty corner from Sacstucco.
They have construction going on there now that got halted, right?
No, that, no, but Tower Bridge Commons is halted.
They're, they're in plan check right now, and they're going to receive a permit very soon.
And just so you know, so the credit, so the district is really trying to get rid of these credits, because as you can imagine, every day that goes by, the value of the credits goes up, so it gets, so as a district, we really want folks to use them, it's hard to say that, because I'm now sitting in this seat, thinking, man, the value goes up, the more value it has, the better off we can, you know, the better, the more value they have for us to use them to incentivize restaurants. But as a district, it's the reverse. You want to get rid of them, and get them out from underneath your, your, your belt before they get too expensive and you can't afford them.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think we're striking the right bat, I mean, the district should be happy with what we're doing, because we would be putting out, you know, of our 191 credits, all but, all but, what, 31 of them would be out the door almost tonight, essentially. So the district ought to be happy. I mean, the, the area that, you know, concerns me the most is our ability to have, it, it feels like we will not have accomplished our restaurant objectives if we go down this path, which, which frankly weren't Riverpoint and the Harbor. I mean, and nowhere in the city do people say, I wish there was somewhere to eat at Riverpoint or Harbor. I mean, that, those are, they're chock full of places to eat, and so it's, in terms of our, execution of our strategy, it's not, I mean, they're not, if that's all we have achieved at the end, I, I, I wouldn't feel, I just don't feel good about that, and we will have exhausted virtually all of the bank. And the, by allowing sort of folks to come in and request, I, I like the five unit, the five limit, I actually think it's, it's a little bit high. I mean, you're essentially, you're essentially inviting folks to, to come in for a $7,500 or so subs, public subsidy. But by having it even at that level, or at eight or seven credits, which is, you know, more than that, closer to $10,000 in public subsidy, what you're saying is, we're just going to pick a couple of winners, and everyone else is out of luck. And so for, if, you know, if, if a restaurant, the kind of restaurant that came out in our restaurant surveys, as being deeply desired by residents and businesses in the community, were to come forward next, we'd say, well, we're all out of them, because we, we, we spent them all on a couple of restaurants. So I like the, the five unit limit, although I, I mean, if it were me, I'd go even, even lower. I, I don't love the eight and seven. I mean, I, the, the Wicked West one is a, and to some extent, it's a special case, because I actually don't see it mainly as a, if it were simply recruiting a new Wicked West to Riverpoint, I would, I wouldn't support it. Because, for the reason I just said, I mean, that's not the Central Business District, that's not the Bridge District, that's not the Washington area, that's not, it's none of the areas where we have a deficit of food. But the, part of the point here was to maintain, to retain Wicked West in its Southport location, in an area that does need, you know, local places to eat, and that, that location is a critical community gathering spot. So to me, that, I got the, the, I got a, the rationale for that one made sense to me, even though eight point whatever credits still seems like a lot, given the amount of credits that are in the bank. I, the Harbor and West Capitol one, I just don't, I don't get it, in terms of being, having to turn away the next restaurant that wants to open up in the Central Business District, or in the Washington District, or in Bright, or, you know, in the Bridge District, have to turn them away and say, well, we, we, we used it for, for a place in, on Harbor and West Cap, when we did not use it for any other restaurant at Harbor and West Cap. We didn't, we didn't waive this for the, you know, the all-you-can-eat sushi, or the Mongolian barbecue, or, or the, or the La Favorita, or anybody else. And it seems, it seems like giving a $10,000 subsidy to one place there is both unfair there, but also diminishes our ability to achieve our actual objective. So to me, I mean, at least putting the five, the five-unit cap on that one makes sense, although I personally don't think it belongs in our strategy, as a strategic priority, period, given the fact that we're going to only have enough left to, to do a couple of restaurants anyway, and we ought to make sure we don't miss the opportunity to do so.
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The, that, that was some of my questions, I talked to you earlier today, and I appreciate you answering the question, and, and seeing the new staff report. But it does have to do, when you let me know that Wicked West 2, and the, and the new restaurant in, in the Harbor area, we're, we're here, it kind of just raised my attention, you know, a little bit about, okay, how does this process actually work? Because they're not located in anywhere that we've identified as core to our, our strategies on growing, on focusing our attention from a, from a city perspective, which is this area, or the Bridge District, or the Washington neighborhood, or some of those areas. So there's, there's no real, you know, I'm looking through the report, there's no, you know, overlay of that sort of strategy on that. And, and the second part that is, is there a, when a business applies for these, there are, it's, it's an application, is, and you bump them up against this criteria, and they, and they, and they do it, but is there any other sort of competitive nature to the, to this, or that says, what Mayor Cobaldon says, to, to that neighborhood? In other words, if they meet all the criteria, we still have to, do we have to say yes? They get it?
Well, let me answer that, with the, with the existing guidelines. So the existing guidelines have maps in them that show the priority areas, and as I mentioned, the, the Indian cuisine restaurant is in, quote, a priority focus area, based on that study that we did in 2009. So it is dated. So our policy, or our prac, I should say, our practice has been that as applications come in, we vet them, we call the people, we check them out, we look at what they're investing, and then we go through a process. If they meet the guidelines, then a request is sent to the city manager, and the city manager has the authority to approve those credits, and then we notify the district, and then they are allowed to get the, get the reduction. So in this case, you know, we did the same thing with both of these, these applications. Wicked West actually applied in January, as far back as January, and it took them that long to really negotiate a deal with a developer and, and get their finances put together, and they actually turned in an application in April, and then followed it up in May with some additional documentation. So they've been in the system for a while, and we, you know, we sort of felt there was, you know, there was a, an expectation that they met the criteria at that time, and that was really before we had received, you know, real firm direction on where we were going with the policy. So we were kind of, staff was kind of grappling with, you know, how do we do this while these are pending? And then the Indian cuisine restaurant was a fairly newcomer to the process, applied in late May, you know, middle of May, for, for the credits. In fact, they, they came to us because they, they weren't going to open the restaurant. They found out, they got a $16,000 estimate from Sacre National, and they said, well, we're, you know, we're done, we're not going to open this restaurant. We also contacted, you know, Wicked West, and, you know, they're investing $300,000 in, in improvements and fixtures and equipment in this new location, and, you know, this is sort of, they've negotiated their lease already, so it's kind of like it's, it's coming a little bit late to let them know that, you know, they may only get five, but if, you know, that we have that purview.
Well, let me, let me step back for a second. I'm not asking the question to revisit these two restaurants in specific. My question is more on the procedure or practice, which is, even if we go forward with the new pol, the new guidelines, as you say, is that, and a business, a restaurant applies for five credits, do we automatically say yes to that? You outline the process, that you vet it, you make a recommendation, it goes to the city manager, and they approve it. And I, and I think that's part of what I'm, what I'm getting at, is that, is that, I almost like this to say, up to five credits for a restaurant. This is say, they have to get five credits. In the case, in the, in the case of, I mean, I'm sorry, I wasn't at the last council meeting to give this input, but I think that's, that's, you know, I, I don't know how that, what I'm looking for is this, as the mayor pointed out, is, is, as these businesses come forward and apply for them, to me, it just sort of smacks as, they, they apply, they're going to get five, when, when, you know, when you're looking at the business case they're making and why they need them, they may be in the business district, they may be in the focus area or in, but is it something that really strategically we need, or is it something that, that fits, or they, this, you know, and I, again, I don't want to pick on these applicants that are, that have been working with you already, so I'm not going to in their specific case, but, you know, I think there's some, some, even though they meet all the checklists, something that it may not fit exactly what we're, what we're looking for in terms of the type of business that, that needs to get these credits, or we might have another one that's more catalytic in its nature than the Indian food one we gave. Again, I hate to use them as an example, because they got their application in time under an existing policy. I'm just more worried about policy and procedure, where the rubber meets the road, and making sure we're, we have that eye to make sure we're hitting exactly what we're, we're after.
Well, I, I just want to, the, the Indian one came in after our last council meeting. I mean, the, the fact that this, that this was all in flux, and that we said that we were going to rewrite all these guidelines, was quite clear.
And we notified them.
Right, so, I mean, that, there's, they should, there, there was no illusion created that this was a, this was a sure thing. We had already, a month prior to their application, had already given very strong direction, we're redoing the whole set of guidelines totally, because we want to be more, more targeted in terms of what we're doing on the restaurant side.
The, the program guidelines we proposed here are, say, up to five, up to five, so we have that flexibility, and I, I stated what our practice has been, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't revise these guidelines and maybe add criteria for restaurants. That's a little more finite, that's a little more defined in terms of the areas. I mean, if you wanted, that could be another way to address prioritizing the restaurant.
I think we were, the part that I just go back to is, we were clear in our strategic planning session, that a good part of our focus, we had, I remember it vividly, we had this discussion that was around this downtown area to the, the Bridge, to the south. We wanted to be clear that this was an area we need to focus on. How that manifests itself in, you know, how we overlay these types of policies, I think this is an example where, where it could be. You know, Mayor's right, I mean, I love all the restaurants in that, in that. Mayor's right, I mean, I love all the restaurants in that shopping center, I don't want to, I go to La Favorita, and I go to Serrano's Cafe, it's terrific places, but they have restaurants there, and we need more food places in these areas, and this is the area we wanted to concentrate on. We had a, the only private investment we've had on this street after we put in our public investment has been the bank at the corner, and Capital Ball, which continues to invest in itself.
Subway.
Oh, and Subway, thank you, thank you, yes, and Subway. So I think that's the area we should be concentrating on, and these credits, because when they get that $10,000, $16,000 quote from the Regional San, you know, that all of a sudden becomes much more daunting because they're in a really untested market, and that's the part I'm worried about.
Maybe one way to approach this, because I mean, if there's only 30 left, and we're essentially, we've delegated that authority to staff, and we have this wide-open policy, this is what happens, is that stuff that's not a high priority is getting through our process, and it shouldn't. And so, I mean, maybe one of, I would, you know, put the five at the most as a limit, and say that even for restaurants, we're looking at the focus area. Grandfather in the one, the one application that we already had that was in process, you know, in April, whatever, when we took this up before, which would leave us with 23, right, or if I'm getting, or 22-point something, which is still not going to, I mean, we'll still have to get lucky for one of those to pay off in terms of, you know, a good restaurant, I mean, of any level, but a good restaurant in the right targeted areas, that's still only four of them, or five of them, depending on how you allocate them. But at least that gives us, that gives more clarity around what we're trying to achieve, and I know the city manager is, you know, listening to both this conversation and the one we had in April, the same, you know.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think Diane's proposed guidelines has the focus area on page one at the bottom, defined in the area that, we didn't come up with an acronym for it, but the area that Mr. Ladesma was talking about, I think is defined in the focus area.
I do, but. Only the catalyst areas are limited to the focus areas in these guidelines.
And we could certainly, I mean, a further restriction would be to say restaurants only in those focus areas will be eligible for credits.
Right, I mean, if there's a provision that says, if there's one that's not, you know, if, you know, some amazing chef is going to open an $8 meal dinner place in Southport and be a great find, I don't have a problem with there being a provision that would allow the city manager to bring, you know, bring that here, in the same way that you would bring some other catalyst project, but I do think, but I think if, the areas that we're delegating authority should be for the stuff that clearly is a priority to us.
Right.
So applying that focus area rubric to the whole policy, not just to the catalyst uses.
Yeah, but, and I guess what I think I'm seeing here is just, the way it's laid out, it's almost a checklist, that they meet these, they get them. And my point is, is that it's almost a scoring system, you know, because I, to your point, it could be back at the Harbor area, and it could be, but it totally scored differently because of the chefs behind it, or the type of restaurant that it is, just, I don't want to leave it to just, you know, yeah, exactly. And so it just can't be a checklist that they meet this criteria, they're out. So, again, there's, we've identified, because I remember reading the restaurant strategy, there's a number of criteria things we were looking for. Area was among them, type of restaurant was among them. So I think those are the kind of considerations, and, you know, I hate to suggest the procedure, but it's almost, should be a scoring system. They may want five, but if they're in a, you know, if they're a run-of-the-mill, franchised fast food place going in where there's five others, and they're asking for sewer credits, it doesn't score very high in terms of their application.
If I could chime in, what I might suggest is a potential fix to the guidelines, based on what I'm hearing here, is that we have the focus area for catalyst uses. We could have the catalyst use focus area applied to restaurants as a, an automatic qualification for up to five credits, and as I heard the other suggestion, if you had a restaurant use that's located outside of that area, the council would have discretion over that request. So that would give us the.
I think you're close, but I think actually what Mayor Potem is suggesting is that for nobody is an automatic five, right, that even within the focus area, you still have to make a case, the city manager can give, you may apply for five, but the city manager can look at the restaurant strategy and say, what the city is trying to achieve is in these areas, is within the focus area, this kind of restaurant, and this is where the deficit is, so, and this isn't that, this isn't exactly that, so we're going to just give you two. Right, that there shouldn't be created an expectation that you get whatever you have applied for without regard to the outcome, even within the manager's authority. And then if you want to create some other, if you want, I mean, the manager always has the ability to bring stuff to us. I don't even know if you need to say, because I kind of, I kind of don't want to have McDonald's locating at whatever, thinking that there's a regularized appeals process to the city council, because there's not that many of these credits, so we don't, we don't have to create a whole set of different procedures and policies in order to allocate them. But I think if we do the, if we do the target, the focus areas, if we make it clear that it's up to five, then we've gone a long way in accomplishing that, and applying that, you know, from April, when we first said we were changing the policy.
There would only be 21 left with the scenario of assigning, if they were eligible for five each, the pending ones, so we're talking about twenty credits.
I'm proposing, Wicked West was in the Hopper, as you say, they did their lease negotiations before April, but I think the new, whatever the new policy is ought to apply to the application from the Indian Restaurant that came in after we had already made it clear we were dramatically changing their policy.
And then you'd like us to revise the guidelines to include the restaurants needing to be in the focus areas, and the up to five limit, and the city manager's discretion as to whether they get zero, one, two, three, four, or five.
Diane, I think that's there, the only thing that's missing is the definition of the focus areas for restaurants.
Okay.
That's right. And if we could clarify that point about restaurants located outside, it's possible council approval if it, or if it meets consistency with the restaurant guidelines as well.
Yeah, and I'd be okay writing that down, I just don't write it in a way that's an open invitation, that's all. And just to put, I mean, this puts a really fine point, it is there, the eligible up to five credits each, but I think, you know, to get to Mr. Ladesma's point, is that should say, you know, at the discretion of the city manager. It's not, it's not, the way you could read it right now is, it's up to five, if you need five, if you need four, then it's four, but it may be you need five and the city manager is just going to say, no, you're only going to get three. So, Mr. Johansson.
Just like, I agree with the conversation on the limitation up to five, and we really need to focus on the, in the focus area. I just get a little concerned about how we rate restaurants, whether it's a personal preference of one versus the other, and to try to kind of limit that discussion. I mean, really, this is about territory, or where we want these things to happen. I would imagine, I mean, you know, say, for example, you have one type of restaurant versus another that's right in the focus area, you know, I personally don't want to get in a conversation about, well, I like this type of food, or that type of food, or this chef or that chef. So to try and get away from them, because I think that's kind of a note, it kind of gets away from the point that we're trying to get things that people will go to in the Central Business District of Washington, and all that, to get people to come down here, enjoy things, and, you know, to really limit anything outside of that territory, just really limit it, because there's only so few here, and there's really, we're really trying to get something going here. You know, residential projects coming in up the street, you know, I can see a need for restaurant at some point between here and the river fairly soon, so to really focus on the territory rather than the type of food.
Thank you.
Diane, in your experience in the last few years when we've tried to use these, how much of it is a make-or-break deal for some of these smaller restaurants? I mean, obviously, the example that you used most recently, the one in the Indian Restaurant, they couldn't make it work and they came to you, and I suspect that that's going to make the difference. And I'm just wondering, as we use the remainder, how much, I mean, how much of a deal is it? And I suspect it'll get even, become an even bigger deal as the sewer costs go up, and I'm just wondering if we should consider or figure out a way to sort of reestablish it or recreate it, if it's that important. I mean, I know for some, it probably tips the scale one way or the other. Is this something that you think we ought to consider figuring out some other way to sort of reestablish it or create some mechanism that buys down the cost if it's that important? Or what's your sense of that?
It's a contributory factor. It, you know, a quality restaurant has a huge amount of TI costs, I mean, you know, hundred, two hundred, $300 a foot, so this is a minor thing, but for a small business, the smaller the business, the bigger a hit it is. The sewer credits themselves, we've not published them because we had so few, we have not published it greatly, because, you know, we knew we had a very small amount. And so as people have, you know, as restaurants have come in, staff have become aware of them and known that this was an obstacle, that's when we tried to deploy the sewer credits.
I just imagine, once they get that, once they start inquiring a bit more about what those costs are going to be, and they get that sticker shock from that initial bill that they would otherwise have to pay, it's pretty traumatic.
The Eatery received credits, VNTN received credits, but then, as an example, IHOP, Chipotle, La Favorita, most of those, you know, they already had a huge budget, so, and of course, fees have been going up, as you pointed out, fees are going up, and will go up every year now, from now on.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I just make one point, thank you for listening too, I know this is, and I appreciate you taking my feedback, and I was not at the last meeting, but, you know, I'm trying to keep mindful of that this is an economic development tool, and, you know, the part that Councilmember Vegas brings up is, you know, we're walking that fine line between being an economic development tool and a subsidy for a business owner who may or may not be able to cash flow that business. So that's, I'm trying to be mindful of the fact that these are publicized, they're there for you and our staff to use and talk to, areas where we're trying to increase economic activity, trying to activate street corners, neighborhoods, whatever else, and that's where my sentiments come from, in that, you know, I understand there's issues when people walk, small businesses walk and they try, into a vacant store and they're trying to make a business work, you know, is that the definition of economic development, helping them get going, or is it more along the lines of what we're trying to do? So that's, just want to understand where my mindset is with this.
I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, so do you have an?
Just one clarification on the recommended action, sorry. We just want to be clear, we're clear on the guidelines changes, I think. On the allocations, our recommendation would be then to do the full allocation to Wicked West, number two. On the Indian Cuisine Restaurant, we would be recommending to allocate five tonight, if that's.
You guys are going to keep coming at it, I'm going to, no, I, the, that one is, should be considered within the framework of the new policy.
Okay.
So if, I mean, if the application comes in and you think that's in the focus area, I don't see that being in the focus area, then the city manager could make the allocation.
But it would be a return to council for that allocation?
Yeah, if the city manager said, I really, you know, I really would like to do this, this makes all kinds of sense for all the reasons that we've identified, keeping in mind that we have this policy, we can't give credits to Rubicon, or to Bike Dog, or anybody else, so, I mean, we've already made some hard calls about this, and the Indian Restaurant is another one, but it is not, it's not advancing, it's not advancing the focus area approach that we have in place, and we made that pretty clear even in April.
Okay, I just wanted that clarification for the action.
Okay, so are we clear then on a motion? Thank you, Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I'll make the motion with the amendments as discussed.
Yeah, further discussion on second half.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? You're done, motion carries, thank you. All right, item 19 is our budget workshop for fiscal years 2013, 14, and 2014, 15.
And, Mr. Mayor, Council, I will briefly introduce this item, and the clerk has a PowerPoint slide to throw up there at some point. For those who were at the Port Commission meeting today, and talking about the port budget being based on very, very conservative assumptions, you'll find the same approach tonight. The budget is a result of a lot of hard work in the last four months by our budget team headed by Mr. Wright, Ms. Richardson also contributed that, several department heads who are, some who are here, put a lot of effort into this. We took the basis in terms of preparing this budget, the two-year budget, from the direction that we got at the January strategic plan meeting, and it was really focused initially on what efficiencies we have. And Ms. Rankin, when you get that slide up there, I'll use it as an outline, otherwise I'll have to memorize what I had. All right, so on slide number two, as we approached this, it was really looking at doing more with less, really squeezing out what we have now. So from a personnel standpoint, the, this budget proposes no net compensation increases employees, most employees have not received an increase for the last four years. This is maintained in this budget. Other efficiencies is that we've not hired, we have made a very conscious effort to look at every single position, not hired to lay the hiring until the position was critically needed. We've had employees doing different types of work that we've discussed a lot at council. In terms of partnerships, we've done several, the big highlights is that the Fire Department has been active in a training consortium, that's been a cost savings, it's also actually improved the relationships with our adjacent agencies. We have looked for private sector partnerships, including a partnership of a winter swim that allowed us to have maintained swimming this winter at the Rec Center. We have looked at partnerships with other cities, including the contracting out of a planner position there. From an operational standpoint, this budget is built on a 15%, maintaining the 15% cut in O and M, but we've asked our departments to go back, and we have an additional 2% reduction in O and M on top of that. Organizationally, we've done several moves to focus our staff on the council's strategic priorities, including moving economic development into the city manager's office, reassigning port staff to Public Works, and really getting our staff to align its workload with the council priorities. We have done some other interesting things in terms of leveraging our GIS staff to work on social media, not having to hire that type of staff, but be able to do it in-house. We've also, from an organizational standpoint, moved code enforcement from PD into community development to improve communications among that and efficiencies. And then financially, and it was recognized earlier in this meeting and in past meetings, the bond refinancing has been a significant effort to be more efficient, and the annual savings on that effort alone is $340,000 a year just to the general fund. There's also benefit to other funds as well, but in terms of efficiently using our general fund money, that's $340,000 a year savings. We've also had a 10% to 15% reduction in the lighting and landscape contracts that we have been pursued. So I think what we have among our staff is a culture that we continue the efficiencies, continue to look for efficiencies, and it's really credit to every single one of our staff. I think the message that we've got from you is clear, and our staff and the leadership of the department heads has really institutionalized that here. So I think that, from an efficiency standpoint, sets the stage for what you're going to hear tonight from Mr. Wright.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and thank you, Marty, for your comments about the budget team. I would like to also just extend my thanks to Dan Roman, Charlene Hamilton, Greg Faben, and Al Terrell, who were obviously part of the team, and I would be remiss, excuse me, I would be remiss if I didn't really compliment Carol Richardson, who we sort of co-led this team, but she was extremely important, you know, years of knowledge of the city and a great sense of sort of what, how we can make this work, and then obviously, Nata Sharma, who is our budget manager, who had to come up with all the numbers. Excuse me. In addition, I think it's important for the council to recognize that when you have six people on a budget committee and trying to come up with solutions, we come up with all sorts of solutions, and every time we come up with a solution, our HR, payroll, and IT staff have to go out and rerun everything again to make sure that the numbers are actually right and we're saving. So I wanted to thank Karen, John, Barbie, and Rob, and their teams for all the work that they did. Now, as Marty said, we have really looked for efficiencies in every area and have created this culture, but despite that, as you see, we still have a general fund. this culture. But despite that, as you see, we still have a general fund operating budget deficit for the next couple of years. So, you know, why is that? Well, there's four or five reasons why we still have some challenges ahead of us. One is our property taxes. While we're suggesting an assumption of a slight increase, last year we got hit with a Prop 8 across-the-board reduction. We didn't expect it. We don't want to count on no Prop 8 this year either. And we have a very substantial number of appeals out there still. These are mostly commercial appeals, but they're very large amounts. So, we're being very conservative in our estimate of property taxes. Second, our sales tax numbers have been very good this year, but our sales consultant is predicting a bit of a flattening, so we're not putting a large number in, 1.8 increase. Probably the most significant thing we've been hit with is these PERS increases. So, in this two-year budget, our PERS increases range from 3.17 for our miscellaneous employees to 5.76 for police, and about 4 for our fire. Those are just huge increases. You know, when you're increasing the PERS by that much on salaries that are 75 to 80% of the general fund, it's a big hit. Healthcare continues to go up. As the council knows, in the last four years, we've got dollar caps on everybody's retiree health. But most of our employees are not at their dollar cap right now, or are retirees. And so, as healthcare goes up, our retiree health continues to go up. And it's gone up, it's almost doubled in the last, you know, 10 years. So, it's now $2.5 million. And you can see the assumption and the recommendation is that we make the full payment. There's, the council has been very adamant about us continuing to make that payment, and it's paid down our un-funded liability, and we're recommending you continue to do so. But that's a big hit to trying to have a balanced operating budget. And then last, we were fortunate in 2010 to get a grant for three police officers, but that grant ran out. And it runs out, I should say, in March of the first year of the budget. Obviously, we could eliminate the positions at that time, but that's not what we're recommending. We, sorry, the grant ran out a year ago. We have to keep the position for one year. Let me be correct in my statement. So, we have to continue to fund them until March of '14. Staff is recommending that we fund them through the entire budget. We think that they're important positions to keep. So, with those problems, as the city manager has mentioned, when we looked at, as a budget committee, for what we needed to do in order to try to present a balanced budget, the first four things we came up with sort of broad-based is, we were not going to increase our staffing, even though work is starting to increase. We were going to continue to ask our employees to give back from their total compensation. It's about 5%. And we wanted to recognize that our employees have done this in the spirit of teamwork. It's been done across the board, all departments, all bargaining units. It's been a long haul. And I know that the council has commented before the appreciation, and I know certainly the budget committee recognizes how difficult that's been on our staff, many of whom, as city manager mentioned, who at the top of their scale have not had a pay increase in four years. Maintaining our current reserves, so council directed the reserve policy to go from 15% to 20%. We moved it to 17. Then, there was the year we had some layoffs, and we decided we were not going to recommend it be increased until the economy sort of turned. We're recommending we keep it at 17, but we still have over $7 million in our general fund reserve, and we're not touching our equipment reserve, which is $6 million. So, we've been very physically conservative to maintain that buffer, which is really there for an emergency, and we've kept that. And then finally, this budget, in looking at number one up there, looking at the maintaining staffing without any increases with the increased workload, in addition to the creativity of moving people around, there, we are surgically looking for areas where we can give people additional work that they have either interest in doing or capability of doing, so we can get the work done for our citizens and our businesses and our community as the economy turns around. And so, there are a limited number of departmental sort of reorganizations that if the council is, direction is that our proposal tonight makes sense, we will be coming back on the 19th with a detailed agenda report and proposal for some of these So, let's take a look at some charts to sort of see where we are. This first chart is a seven-year retrospective and shows the next two years and what it shows for the general fund. And we use the general fund because it's a pretty good marker of the rest of our funds. What it shows is, we've had an operating deficit really since '09, '10, which doesn't surprise anybody here, because obviously '08, '09 was the beginning of the economic downturn. And so, in '09, '10, we had a problem. Luckily, and as you can see, '07, '08, and '08, '09, we had very good years, and we didn't spend all that money. We were physically conservative. And so, we had carryover funds. It really helped us get through the '09, '10 year. And then you'll remember the very painful '10, '11 year, which was when we had a huge deficit. And even the carryover funds and even all the concessions didn't save us from having to reduce our staff with some layoffs, although minimal. It was painful, and we had lots of people retired during that timeframe through some voluntary retirement programs. And so, since '10, '11, what you can see is that the gap is getting smaller. And it's got a little bit smaller in '11, '12, but not much. A little bit smaller in this, in '12, '13. But we still have a gap for the proposed budget '13, '14, and '14, '15, albeit significantly smaller. So, how do we propose bridging the gap between, for the next two years? Our suggestion is that we continue the approach council has adopted for the last four years in the budget, which we sort of like, I like to call it the three-pronged stool, or the multi-pronged balanced approach. It comes from the budget guidelines that council adopted and revised to do this citywide, even-handed, taking, you know, the key components of city, the city services into account. And it's using a little bit of general fund revenue, because this year, we're going to have a little bit, it's important to say, we have some general fund carryover revenue because we use 1.35 million of one-time money. So, there's, there shouldn't be any confusion that we had a year where we didn't have a deficit. We had a significant deficit. But we didn't use all the 1.35. We have $58,000 left, so a little bit there. We've been able to look at all of our revenue sources and find some new ongoing revenues as we did in the past. Some are brand new, some are things that was money that was coming in, and it was just sort of sitting in a fund, and it wasn't being used, and we could reallocate it. We've, as the city manager mentioned, we've asked every department in this budget to reduce the O and M from the 15% reduction down to a 17% reduction, so an additional 2%. We've made some adjustments based upon the mayor's comments in the Port Commission. We probably have a couple other minor adjustments we need to make on a couple other personnel that could be assigned differently than we have them currently assigned, that would make some fine tuning, I would say. And then some one-time money. Those are the approaches that we're looking from the big picture. So, what does that look like? Again, here's the slide that the council has seen on a number of occasions out of the last couple workshops, where we look at our actuals for '11, '12. We look at our projected for the end of this year, and then we have our forecast. And what you can see is, we had $1.2 million and almost a $1.3 million operational deficit in the last two years. It's down to $700,670 for the next two years. And you will note the numbers underneath, the 547 and the 597, which are supplemental equipment requests. I think it's important that the council recognize that those equipment requests were really requests made in '10, '11 for the '11, '12, and the '12, '13 budget. And they were deferred because we had a $1.3 million problem. Staff does not believe they can be deferred any longer. These are police guards that were extended to additional years, and we don't believe that we can just continue to push that down the road any further. So, that leaves us with a fairly similar problem, obviously, that we've had. And the proposal is to use 401,000 in one-time revenues, 383,000 in the ongoing new revenues that we've discovered and moved and are planning to implement, and then some budget adjustments of about 414,000 to get us to a balanced budget. So, here's the pie chart that we've shown you before that sort of visualizes this balanced approach, where we've got some ongoing revenues, we've got some reorganizations, we've got some one-time money. What you don't see in here that you've seen in the past are the employee concessions, because that's just continuing. So, we could redo that pie chart, and it's about $300,000 in employee concessions. So, it's actually closer to 400, it's about 360, I believe, and I could be off by a little bit. So, you know, we have, we have multiple large chunks that we're using to try to get the balance, the budget balanced.
If you did that, wouldn't you need to carry forward all the other reductions from the past years that continue forward, too?
Correct. That's why we didn't put it in this chart. I was simply saying that that's a big, that's probably the biggest, well, that may not be the biggest one. There were a lot of other big ones. You're right. I simply wanted to remind council that that's a big chunk that's part of the puzzle. But you're right, there's also all the other things we've done.
All the services that people aren't receiving, I mean, there's all the other chart choices that also got made that are, that continue forward until we reverse them.
Absolutely. That's a very good point, Mayor. There's multiple things we've done in the last four years that are not shown on that chart that are part of solving this puzzle. And you're absolutely correct. And then, and then the last slide is sort of a historical slide of how we've balanced the budget since the economy really took the downturn. And it's visualizing that initially we were able to use carryover. The next year, we really had to make a lot of reorganization adjustments, and we still had a little bit of carryover. We ran out of carryover money. We dug in and found some additional revenue that we had to add to that. And then you can see, we had to increase the employee concessions the next year and use a larger amount of one-time money. And now you can see the proposed budget, the one-time money, which is the brown, is being reduced, obviously. We've got some continuation of the reorganizations, a little bit of the ongoing revenue, and then the employee concessions. And as the mayor just correctly pointed out, there are, every other item we've done in the last four years could be added on to the bottom of this chart as other ways that we've had to use to balance the budget. So, that concludes my sort of prepared remarks. I was just going to add a couple things really quickly. Mr. Mayor, you made a comment about the Measure K money, the 21,500. These were services that have come under Measure K. We put the equipment there. There is money in the road fund, so we would propose that we, so we move that 21,000 to the road fund based upon your comments. Second comment was just generally, there was some discussion in the Measure K report. I wanted the council to know that we will be coming back to council, both on 106, Fund 106, Measure G, and Measure K, to get the direction from council. And we, the goal is to do the same type of scorecard that we've done for Measure K with those other two measures, once we get the direction from council, which we'll come back later with, at the council's direction. And then, this does not include what you just approved, the refinancing of the water, which doesn't go where there's additional savings. And we will continue to look for efficiencies and additional savings every place we can.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Are questions first, Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Phil, can you go back to the previous slide?
Absolutely.
I say absolutely, because I don't have to do it.
Okay. So, the employee, continuing employee concessions, those are really, when we're looking at 2013, '14, and '15, that's just a continuation with maybe some slight adjustments, right?
It's a continuation, because a lot of this stuff is based upon paying more of their PERS. It goes up as their, if their salaries go up.
Okay. So, we're looking at, you know, another two years of paying, pretty much.
Yes.
Well, it's been a long five years. You know, one of the things I'd like to, first of all, thanks for the, for the presentation. But, you know, we really have seen kind of camaraderie with the staff and how to adjust to this. We, like you said, we had a couple years that we really had to bear down and had to lose some people with retirements or layoffs. But, yes, tight. It's really tight still. And, you know, I think, I think people appreciate, you know, how we're operating the city, but, you know, really, it's the staff here that's taking the brunt of this. And I know, I really appreciate, you know, that people sticking with this. And it's tough. You know, I'm out in outside government now, and it's tough out there still. There's a lot of, you know, either lights deep in the tunnel or a train coming at you, you know, however you want to look at that. But it's, it's very tentative. There's a lot of room for optimism, but we're really not there yet. So, I think, you know, projecting out two years of this is probably a reasonable way to look at this, to really not have any significant changes in concessions at this point, a continuation, maybe a tweak here, tweak there. And then, you know, like you said, like with the bond refinancing issue, we've got, we're picking up some money there, and little things like that, a couple hundred thousand here, a couple hundred thousand there. You know, we're looking at cutting into this, because it's not a huge deficit. But, you know, it is a deficit nonetheless. And so, I think it's, I think it's a reasonable approach, you know, looks reasonable for the next couple of years as well.
Questions or comments, Mr. Vegas?
Thank you, Phil. It's a lot of information. You guys have worked extremely hard in trying to put this together, so it actually, actually makes sense, which oftentimes the budgets don't after several iterations. The assumptions, the very first page that you had, you have to put it up. But the ARC payment, how common is that for cities to pick up that, that sort of unfunded liability for retirees?
Well, it's, the payment that we're doing right now is based upon prior promises that weren't funded. And under the Gatsby 45 rules that probably five years ago, is that my right, I just said about five years ago, we were required to not only put them on our CAFER, but you're required to come up with a plan over 30 years to fund it. And so, we're simply, the people, these are people who we've already made promises to and for years past, that we have an unfunded liability, that our actuary, you know, does their magic, and they say, "This is how much money you need to put away to pay for these commitments." And so, we've been kicking into that. It was about 25 million, and we have about...
About 19 million.
About 19 now. So, we've brought it down. Unfortunately, we've paid more than the difference between the 25 and the 9, because obviously, the amount, every time the actuary redoes the calculations, the amount you have to put away goes up. But, but not as fast as the money we're putting away. So, we're paying it off, and we have time to pay it off. All cities are supposed to do this, but there are cities, obviously, that have deferred making payments.
Well, that's what I'm wondering.
But they have to, they have to put that on their CAFER. It can affect your credit. It's, it's...
It's reflected on a sheet somewhere. It's reflected, they're responsible for it.
Correct.
There is some, necessarily making the payment. Okay. All right.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah. Phil, first of all, thank you for the report. I mean, you guys, you and Tish and your staff, you do a great job. I mean, it's not the greatest, it's not the greatest projections in the whole world and everything else. And, you know, the council, we really wish that, you know, there were, you know, increases and different things going on, because I know the council knows how hard all of our staff works, the whole city staff. And, you know, it's just a, it's sort of, it's sort of a shame, but it's the nature of the beast that, you know, you've got economic downturns and things like that. And it affects people. It really does. But we've got really good staff, and they hang in there. And, you know, it's one of these days, you know, things may turn around. But, and I'm sure they will. And so, you know, there will be, you know, the good times will hit again. I don't know when, but, you know, in a number of years. But, one of the questions I had is, is with the port receiving the $650,000 a year, is that money going to, in essence, the city to pay back the loans?
Yes. It's going to the successor agency, actually. But the money that the port will be paying us back is obviously going to have a positive impact on the city's overall finances.
Okay. I didn't see that anyplace in here. Where would it go?
Well, there's, there's really very little money being paid back in this two-year budget. They're paying it interest-only right now.
Interest-only right now.
It's actually, the general facilities fund made the loan, so the interest payment will go in the general facilities fund, which is a capital fund.
Okay.
So, we have it part of our next presentation, CIP, and the revenues in there will actually be, includes that.
So, we're going to get about $10 or $12 million back by that, right?
I think we... I think we, I think we get, what do we get a year?
64,000 dollars.
64,000.
We might give a couple thousand dollars, okay.
Or we will get, we will get, the full amount will be paid back under the amortization schedule, and it will be available for the council to direct how to use it in the capital budget.
One of the areas that I see we're a little deficient in, and that is flood protection. Now, I realize we've all gone through all of this, we're not increasing people's pays or not hiring new people, and all these other things, but there is an issue out there that really, I think, deserves some attention. I don't know when, or I don't know how we can do it. I know that people like Greg Faben and Public Works folks and HDR, they've been trying to sort of carry the ball for us on the flood protection manager. It is so important that we do find a way eventually to get someone on board that can work the federal level, that can work the state level with DWR, Water Resources, and then, of course, at the federal level with FEMA, and, because if FEMA comes in and remaps us, it's gonna be very, very difficult for a budget like this to even continue. But at the same time, so I think that we need that person with that kind of expertise. So anyway, it's just something out there that I thought of a number of months ago when we lost some key people, and I know we went out for a search, and it really didn't materialize because of some retirement issues. But at the same time, I think it's something we really need to keep in the back of our mind and, and continue to think about that, because if we were to have something catastrophic happen in the city of West Sacramento, it would be absolutely devastating. And this person could, you know, I think, really do an awful lot of good as far as grants and just making the connections with the water people, and making connections, you know, with the water people at the federal level, the state level, our decision-makers back in Washington DC, as far as Boxer Feinstein, Matsui, just really sort of helping and pushing and nudge so that we can get the proper flood protection that we really need here. And so, I don't know how we make it work, but it's just something I would throw out there against the wall and see what sticks. Thank you.
Well, the city managers made it very clear to me that that's a high priority on our recruitment list, and so we are actively involved in trying to solve that problem.
I know. Well, I know we've got other comments, but just on this point, to put an exclamation point behind the need and the, to not be penny-wise and pound foolish, and recognize our compensation structure and all of that, but if there's a need for a full-blown department whose responsibility is flood protection and is a department director level, I mean, I just want to join Mr. Kristoff, Kristoff, in emphasizing how critical this really is. A half a billion dollar capital program that has a threat of being killed every seven minutes requires, does require, you know, the appropriate investment in the very best human resources in order to succeed. So I obviously won't solve that here at the dais, but I just, you know, just to add on to the, to the emphasis about the need to, to do this really, really well in terms of staff work and staff leadership.
And I'd just like to emphasize too, I mean, we've got Greg Faben working on it now, he's been doing just a crackerjack job, he's really been doing really well. And there seems to be a whole team that is, is, is working on the issue, but I do, and they do great, but I think that we could take it to another level, and since this is the number one priority and has been the number one priority for the city for a number of years, I'd just like to see if there's a way we can make some of that kind of stuff work. Thank you.
Mayor Pretend LaDesmond?
Thank you. Thanks, Phil, for the presentation, and thanks to all the staff, the rest of the department heads for your contributions on this and the proposal and the direction you've taken, and I'd like to echo some of Mr. Kristoff's comments on the, on just the rest of the, just the team within City Hall who work every day on behalf of the city, and, and under the circumstances of our last five years, certainly understand the stress it causes, and so, I think, you know, part of my comments are just to kind of echo a little bit of what was said on by Mr. Kristoff and Mr. Cabaldin around, you know, we're getting to a time where, where our priorities are still here, flood protection is first and foremost, as they articulated, and the budget, we've been running in a structural deficit for how many years now?
This will be, well, no, four, and this will be six at the end of the next year.
Yeah, and I think I'm cautiously want to express the need for us to start looking at our organization in a way that makes sure we take, take care of these priorities. I wanted to bring up flood protection, they just articulated it as well as I, better than I could. We need to have these things taken care of, and we have found ways to work through a structural deficit, using one-time monies. I'm not super comfortable at all times having the deficit under our belt, but we're managing through it, and, but it goes with the, with the culture that's already embedded, we just have to keep at it, which is, we need to keep finding these efficiencies. I mean, it's saving us every year to do that, and I guess part of my message on the other side of the priorities is the economy, it's not back to where it was in 2005 or 2006, and the, what I would say is that it's never going to be again for sometime soon, I wouldn't, I don't like to say that it's gonna come back, to Mr. Kristoff's point, is like, will the good times come again, I don't know when they are, I just, I'm not sure if they ever will. I think we're, we're adjusting to a new time, and we have to keep adjusting the way we do business here at City Hall. And we've made some, you know, I'm looking through the list of efficiencies we've made, a number of them, we, you know, necessity is the mother of all invention, we've had a boatload of necessity and a boatload of invention the last five years, and we need to keep that going. So I applaud you and urge you staffs to keep that up, and the light at the end of the tunnel is, is that hopefully we'll work our way to a point where we, the priorities being flood control, we don't get mapped by FEMA, we can continue on our economic development. The other priority I wanted to bring up is to make sure, because I know, looking in the corner, Ms. Hamilton and her staff are starting to see activity again at the counter. The city has done very well in the 10 years I was on the planning commission, being service-oriented, making sure we're an easy place to do business across the board in all departments. As we start to get busy again, to whatever the new normal busy is, I want to make sure we're staffed to handle it. I think one of our competitive advantages has always been our ability to manage through these, so I'm not suggesting we go hire new people, I know there's been some adjustments we're looking at, and I would ask you to, again, I support those for the, those very reasons, is that, you know, people are gonna keep coming to the counter, people are keep coming to looking for permits, people are gonna keep coming looking for new services, and we need to be able to fulfill those. So whatever means, my point is, is that within, you know, again, with the cautious go-forward is that we need to make sure, we look at that, and it's not an immediate no, to my opinion, it's not an immediate no that we say we're not gonna hire new, new people anytime soon. The need is, the need arises, and it, and it is critical for our ability to do business. I want it to be discussed, deliberated, thought through, and look at interesting ways. We've brought up partnerships, there are colleagues across the causeway who we teased to a bit, they hired a chief innovation officer with half his salary is paid for by the private sector. Now, is that something we want to do? I don't know, but the point is that they did something to, to help generate activity in their city, and I think that's the sort of spirit, I know we can do it, we've been doing it the last five years, and I'm, and, and a lot of what I see here continues that, and again, I'm just urging us to continue going forward, and if anything, kind of steer into the skid a little bit, that, you know, we understand, I understand where we are, we keep finding a way to manage through it, and I think we just need to really work on making sure we can care for the things that matter and the things that are gonna save our, you know, what's in the next three to five years when the economy is stronger. So those are my comments for today, and I just want to make sure staff knows that I appreciate the work you've done on this, and I probably have a few more specific questions, but I'll let the mayor chime in first, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I agree with all the comments my colleagues have made, it's, it's, this is the challenging time we knew was coming, which is that it looks like the economy's doing better, we're seeing people buy stuff, wanting to build stuff, coming to the counter, whatever, and so it feels like we should be doing the same thing as an organization, but we knew from the outset that that was, that there was gonna be, at best, a lag, that because of the, the structure of taxation that doesn't keep pace with it, because demand at the counter doesn't keep, is not, you know, when you come with your first request, it doesn't come, you're not paying a fee, I mean, there's just a whole lot of factors that, that decouple the recovery from our revenues, but don't decouple the recovery from our expenditure. So it's, I mean, it's, it is, there is a lot of cold water we have to keep throwing at ourselves as an organization around what's possible. So I am also very, very reluctant to sort of see the world as, you know, we just gotta hang on for three more years, and then we're gonna restore everything that we did before, which we're not, and then we're gonna get back to a world where it's 5% increases every year forever. This, that's gone, it's not coming back. And we, you know, at its high point in this city, one out of every six people was unemployed, and many of the rest were underemployed, barely making their mortgages, having their homes foreclosed on. Yes, we had significant pain in the organization, reflective of even deeper, more severe pain in the community. So, you know, sometimes, you know, we need to be careful not to be so inwardly focused that we forget the people that we serve and who are paying our bills, that they've gone through the same thing, and still are in many cases. Many of them work for the state and haven't had an increase in forever. Many of them work in private enterprise and lost their jobs entirely. So we're the, in some sense, we're the lucky ones that are still here, working for this organization, doing amazing things, so I, I don't, I think to something that is harmful to talk about it as though it's just three, you know, if we just hold on a little longer, it's gonna get back, because it's not, and we shouldn't promise that, because it will never get back if we don't do the kinds of things that Mr. LaDesmond was just saying. If we, if we think of every penny that walks in the door, comes in the door as, okay, now we can do, we can restore back something that we used to do, as opposed to, how are we gonna, how are we gonna, you know, drive economic prosperity in this community, then we'll never get there. I remember in the last decade, when I, you know, some of us used to get attacked because we were only raising some of our public safety salaries by, you know, 50% over an eight-year period. If we'd only done it by 100% over an eight-year period, we'd have been better off. But that would have meant not building IKEA, it would have been, you know, meant not doing the Southport Town Center. Doing those things is what allowed us to do even the increases that we did. And if we don't, if we hunker down so much with this internal upset, internal focus around restoring our, our, our internal world to what it was in 2009 at the high point, we won't make the kind of investments in innovation and in, and in new initiatives and stuff that we have to do, you know, our, our city succeeded over the last 15 years because we were willing to take risks and be on the edge and lead and do things differently, and we have to continue to do that. Now, this doesn't mean we don't have carte blanche, we don't have the resources to just go crazy, but we can't, we can't, we can't have the reverse problem, which is just to be too much focused on the good old days, from an internal perspective. So I think this budget strikes the right balance, but as long as you're asking us to approve a budget, ultimately, this is just a workshop, but as long as you're asking us to approve a budget that has, that is not structurally balanced, we're still in a budget crisis, right? So, so, you know, the notion that we're almost out of the woods cannot be, it just cannot, by definition, cannot be true if, if you're still asking us to rely on one-time revenues. I'm supportive of it, but, but we can't have the contrary thoughts in our head that we're gonna, we need to use one-time revenues to balance our budget because it's structurally imbalanced, and how do we get to a point where we are, you know, doing new hirings and, and we're going back to annual COLAs and all that, those can't be, that can't be the same year. And so I think you've got the right balance in this approach, I'm supportive of what you've, what you've outlined, but, you know, we need to be very, we should be clear with ourselves about what the, what the, what the future looks like, that is not necessarily just a, you know, a mirror reflected back on 2008, '09, which were some great times, but that's not, that's not where, that's not where we're gonna be back again, and we need to have a budget approach that, that builds back strategically in those domains, but also allows us to do the sorts of things that Mr. LaDesmond described. Alright, so then are the specific questions and comments on this, everybody's given there?
I'll start.
Yeah, Mr. Viegas?
Yeah. Phil, the, the Bridging the Gap, page, page five of the staff report has additional state revenue for law enforcement programs, what, where does that come from? Page five, towards the bottom there, under new ongoing revenues, the additional law enforcement funding, what is, what's, what's, what source?
Did your mic go off?
Yeah, I think your, I think your mic is off.
Yeah.
Sorry, there we go. There's some money as part of the 109 that was basically, people were trying to figure out how, whether it was gonna be allocated the same way as the base 109 money.
That's the same, okay.
It's now been sorted out, and we're gonna get this money on and ongoing.
Not only actually increase.
Yes, correct, it's actually gonna go up, most likely, although we didn't build that into the budget.
No, smart to do that, yeah, okay. So, so that's good news, the, and then the, just chiming in on the, the recommendation for the funding for the three police officers, continuing that COPS funding, I think that makes good sense, we don't wanna have to return any of that money, so we want to continue those positions. And then I just had a question, in terms of, and we keep hearing about the property tax, and I don't want to, I don't want to beat this dead horse, but in terms of the, so how big is the risk, worst-case scenario, if all the appeals were to not be in our favor, how big of a risk is, because we keep hearing that, I know it's something to consider, and I know we've been warned about it repeatedly for the last few years.
It's huge.
Okay.
What was the number to Tish? I mean, I don't want to be disastrous, but if we, if all the, if all the appeals were upheld for what people have requested, we would be using the B-word. I mean, it's just, you can't, we couldn't possibly absorb it.
But hundreds, hundreds...
What word would we use? Hundreds of millions of dollars.
Oh, bankers?
Oh.
No, no, we're not using that word.
That's why, that's why.
That's a different deal.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Alright, so...
I think it was 180...
108 million.
108 million.
But the problem is, is the county has two years to hear the appeals, and each, some companies file appeals each year, so it, you know, the county...
That's what I, okay, that's what I was wondering, so this, these are multiple appeals, multiple years, dating way back to, at least, well, not way back, but at least two years.
Two years back.
They basically just keep, they're, they're doing the, right on the date of two years, they're solving, just without naming names, there's some, every one of our largest companies.
I figured as much.
Some of them have been doing it for seven years, and they withdraw their appeal every single time.
Got it.
One, one building was, was reduced from 110 to 95, their request is to go to 30.
30, alright.
Well, it's not gonna go to 30, I mean, I think we, talking to the county auditor controller, it's not going to 30, but could it go from 95 to 85?
Right.
In order to get it settled at the last minute? So they're very substantial.
Alright, well, it's probably best that we, that we move in a very conservative approach that's methodical as we figure out what the end result will be. Okay, fair enough. Well, first, I just wanted to say thank you, Marty, I know this is a tremendous amount of work, and I gotta just say, I mean, this, this is precisely where everything else that we do in this city, everything, police, fire, parks, roads, like, every single thing we do starts right here, nothing else matters. And when I first got on the council, I remember asking people what they thought my primary responsibility was, and they would say, you know, making sure that the parks are always open, and make sure they have police and fire, blah, blah. We have to make sure that our budget is balanced and that we're fiscally, fiscally sustainable every moment of every day, otherwise, none of that stuff happens. And so this is where it all begins and ends for us, this is our most, well, aside... This is our most, well, aside from hiring the city manager, this is our second biggest and most important responsibility. Well, I don't know, maybe it's sometimes more important. Sorry, Marty. But you've done a good job of laying out, I think, a very, a very responsible and fiscally disciplined budget, at least for this workshop, so it makes good sense. Thank you.
Mr. President, Ledesma.
Thank you. I just had a quick question because on the same section, on the bridging the gap, it's kind of two, one on the increase in code enforcement fees. Is that the 25,000 what we're expecting in? Or what, what can you expand on?
So that's a very conservative number. That will need to come back to council, obviously.
Right.
What we're proposing, we've looked at the fees that are currently being charged and they are very low compared to every other jurisdiction. So our plan is to put together a fee study and bring it to council with recommendations. And so this was, at one point, the budget committee was looking at 75,000 to 100,000 and we said, we're going to go very low because we got to get the fee study done, got to get it to the council. This is anticipated half a year of, in the first year. So anticipate that we get the fee study to you and it's approved, so that it takes effect in January. And this is on the very low end, so we think we'll get more savings than this. But it does require additional council action, obviously.
Okay, thank you. And I just want, I wasn't sure what you were trying to communicate there, if there was a new fee you're already proposing or it's coming back. And I guess my, my guidance on those types of things, I'm not opposed at all at what we can do to look for additional revenue or new revenue streams coming in, especially on areas that are under, where other jurisdictions are charging for similar services. I also want to be cautious not to go overboard on things that will impact the citizens that we're trying to serve. I mean, and I think that's, I'm just kind of recollecting the crash tax across the river or other, you know, and then I, when I saw that, I kind of like, we're not going to go there and start looking for those types of services. Because that, again, puts our, the people we serve who are continuing to fund what we do and benefiting from the services, obviously, but we don't want to put in a perception that now we're just really pushing the envelope on those things. So I'm glad to hear that this is one aspect. But the other question on regard to this was sort of our approach to looking at additional fees around this. Is there, is there continuing to look at our fee structure or other services we offer that we were not charging fees?
Yes, the two areas that we identified in the budget committee that department heads brought to us as being extremely low that we want to bring back to council are the fire inspection fees and the code enforcement. So those were the two that jumped out, excuse me, from the subject matter experts saying, we've looked, we've talked to our, you know, department heads in other cities and what we're charging is 25% or, you know, very, very low and we need to increase them. And a belief, to address your question, that in fact, not increasing them and the increases could be on third-time offenders, you know, repeat offenders, that we're actually not looking to change, have a punitive effect on our businesses or our citizens, but rather to have the effect of getting people to comply who just continually don't comply, that those, those people need to pay for the services that we're providing because they're the ones that are making us have the code enforcement officers out there writing citations and doing the hearings.
Right.
And they're not paying for them right now.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for expanding on those two things.
On the tax estimate, so the, the sales tax piece, I asked, I don't know if it was in this meeting, was it on the district taxes?
Yes.
So the district taxes, is the, the sales tax increase of 1.8% that's projected, is that, is that built on the increase, the most recent reported increase?
Yes.
And so, and it, but we haven't decomposed that to know how much of that is an actual increase in sales versus how much is the change in the online?
We don't know that yet, no.
Sales tax, okay. And then, so just to reemphasize, you need to be very conservative in that domain because if that is, you know, if a significant portion of that is generated by the online sales tax change, that's a one-time, a permanent one-time bump and can't be trend-lined. But, and then the property tax piece, how are we treating the property tax revenue that we're receiving that would have previously gone to the agency?
It's all going to 106.
But I mean, in terms of the revenue estimate, is that, is it, when you say, you know, property taxes are up by whatever the number you said, 1.2 or 2% or whatever?
2%.
Does that include the increase that's because we're receiving more, more, more straight property taxes that would have otherwise gone to the agency?
I don't, I don't believe so. But that money doesn't go into the separate, it's a separate.
It's Fund 106, Community Investment Fund, that's where that money goes to.
It's not included in this number.
It's not included in here.
Okay, so it's not, it's not included in your estimate. I know it's spent out of that fund, but it's not, it is still property taxes.
It is.
The city's portion of the property tax only, not any agency redistribution.
Okay. All right, any other?
And just on your, you know, one of the things we will check with our consultant is whether that reduction in sales tax from the 3%, maybe even above the we're getting this year down to 1.8 may reflect, may have taken into consideration your concern already. So we will, we'll reach out to community services and then.
Usually they do, sales consultants, they do, do not include one-time hits because that, you know, it's not sustainable, so they don't, so we'll double-check that.
Okay. All right, other questions or comments? All right, you have enough. Oh, you want us to adopt it? We don't have the actual budget.
That, that proposal was simply if you were comfortable with the general approach, we would go ahead and prepare the actual budget document rather than coming back for, we would come back, obviously, and bring it to you. But that was only if there were not significant changes or you wanted us to come back. We certainly can come back either, I'm not sure we'll be ready by the 19th, but we could try.
I mean, given the state of municipal finance and some other cities' failure to exercise appropriate fiscal oversight, I mean, I think it is important for us to approve the actual budget more than just a couple of charts. So for me, I'd prefer, I'd say conceptual, we're granting conceptual approval, but you need, but the final approval of the budget would come back to the council. Yes.
So we will look to see whether we think we can get that put together by the 19th. If not, what we would have to do is on the 19th, do a continuing resolution just to get us to the 17th. But we'll, we'll get the staff together and see whether we think we can get it by the 19th.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll so move. Motion.
I'm moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed here now that motion carries? Thank you. Thanks to the whole budget committee, all the staff, all the team that worked on this. Great job. Item 20, Workshop on Biennial Capital Improvement Budget and Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, the approach to bring forward a balanced biennial budget, capital budget included coordination with various, actually every city department. So I'd like to thank all the project managers and also the steering team for their direction. I'd also like to thank Mark Zolo, who actually did substantial amount of work on this budget. The criteria that we used, the two major criteria that we used to request project funding were health and safety issues and also the nexus to council's strategic plan. The receipts, we have actually experienced this year, the receipts of impact fees are trending upward and our, our budget, the projected revenues are based on modest increases and sufficient enough to cover the proposed budget request. So we have analyzed our impact fees and we, we understand that it's, it's going up, but we have used a very conservative approach for forecasting. In your packet, we have included a biennial budget request of proposed projects. And this actually is pretty much the, the two-year budget. And then we also have included a three-year plan. And we also provided you with a handout that has a list of capital programs that doesn't have any funding source, but that will be some of the projects that we are right now working on as part of the community investment plan. Just moving on to the next slide where we look at the appropriation, we have a total of $51.7 million in capital improvement budget, proposed budget. That includes active projects of 95 active projects and also 37 new projects. So of active projects, we are actually of $92 million budget, we only expanded 57%. So we still have 43%, which is $39.4 million remaining in the pipeline. Some of the major projects that accounts for the 34, 39.4 is the Pioneer Bluff Bridge, which is about $10 million, nine, 10.5 million, and 9.6 is coming from the state funding. Also included in the 39.4 is the construction of the Sycamore Park, which is actually state-funded also, it's about $4 million. Due to the substantial amount of work still to be done, 43%, 39.4 million, we're only requesting in the next two years, a total of $12 million, $12.3 million of projects, proposed projects, which is $7 million and 5.3 in each years. So in our, in the staff report and also in the attachment, we, the 22 projects that we are asking additional money, that they are active projects and there are, next slide, 37 projects where we're asking for about 5.0, actually 6.3 million. In your report, we have actually shaded the strategic plan objectives projects. For example, some of them I just listed here, Streetcar Design, Pioneer Bluff Bridge, Sycamore Park, Bright Park Master Plan and the bike, bike peda master plan projects, the two, and then Sacramento River Crossing. So I put together a chart of the sources of funds to fund the $51.2 million program. As you can see, the majority of the funds, 35% is from fund balance that we are projecting as, at the end of June 30th, 2013. And then for the next two years, the rest of the revenues will be coming from grants is 19%, 14% would be impact fees. The bonds include the refinancing of the water, water revenue bond. And we have a proposed project to do a liquid chlorine project that's listed under Fund 507. So the savings we are proposing to use for that project. And utility rates is also listed there, too. So going back to long-term CIP projects, so we have a two-year budget and we have a three-year plan. In our three-year plan, these are the projects we actually have identified, but we actually haven't secured funding yet. So some of the major projects is Village Parkway, Pioneer Bluff Bridge to Stone Gate, and some of the major sewer system repairs, and also some of the ADA improvements. Today, we handed out a list of long-term CIP projects. And in this list, we haven't identified any, any cost to it because we are still exploring the projects and it's going to be part of the community investment project. So we're planning to bring a Measure G report and we'll have a number of projects listed in there with funding source. As you can see, one of the projects I want to highlight is the sewer infrastructure. You'll, you're going to see that in, in that report also. So this concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Kristoff.
Yeah, Tish, under Fund 205, traffic improvement?
Yes.
South River Road Bridge, and we have the monies, I guess, for the bridge. But there's more to it than just that. There's South River Road itself, because it's going to need to be signalized, because there's a lot of industrial traffic that pops out. And is that taken, is that taken care of in the 9.6?
Yes, it is, I believe.
Yes, it is, and we'll bring that scope to the June 19th meeting. It includes, it includes the traffic issues that you addressed with signals.
Realization, really? Whoa, impressed, okay. And then in Road, on Funds 780, I'm, I'm sorry, 870? It has I Street EIP design permit and I Street Bridge EIP construction. Well, those are completed.
Yes, true. And we normally have to keep the projects open for any additional cost to close out the project. Even though the construction is completed, we still have costs associated to complete the project, for example, maps and a few other things. So it's mostly staff charges to close out the project. So we have some balance remaining. And what we're planning to do, we'll take this item to the Flood JPA Board and where we'll may reallocate funds.
Yeah, because the only thing we're doing now is we're collecting some money from the state. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Yeh.
Yeah, I was trying to find out, there wasn't any description of the, under the long-term CIP projects, the major sewer system repairs. What, what are we, because I know we've deferred a whole lot of stuff for the last several years. What kinds of repairs and what are we talking about there, do you know?
I would like to have Greg Fiven probably answer that. He's, he's more aware of these projects.
Because I think it said there was no identified fund source available or identified.
We're going to be embarking on the sewer master plan update in the course of the next year, which will help to categorize and identify future projects. And that really was a placeholder just to, to let the council know that we're looking into it and we, we plan to do repairs in a prioritized fashion based on the results of the study.
Of the rate, the rate and fee study?
No, the master plan study, the sewer master plan.
Oh, okay.
And, and that will have to dovetail into the sewer, the future rate study as well.
So what kind of stuff are they, are we talking about, Greg said, I mean, because I know we've deferred a whole host of things.
Just as we've gone through and done, major waterline repair and upgrades, we're going to have to go through and do the same with a lot of sewer lines deteriorated, yes.
Okay, so that'll be, all right, great, thank you.
So just one, one structural, the city manager tried to solve this by having you include the long-term capital list, I think. So a long time ago, I think, pre, pre Chris Ledesma, the way we used to have the capital budget, it was either the capital budget or the capital program presented to us, essentially gave us the full list of the projects that were on your consideration list at the staff level. And there was a below the line, right? So there was, they were essentially ranked or at least put into two categories, ones that you're recommending funding and the ones that we just don't have enough money to fund. But we saw the whole list and so we could say, yeah, that looks right. And 95% of the time, we said, yeah, that looks right. But we could also say that one that's just above the line, that if we go down two more that were two, two below the line, we actually think as a matter of policy and priority in the community that they should flip, right? So we should not fund this one so that we can fund this one. That, we don't have that information and, and this is not a knock on you, Mr. Tuttle, we didn't get it last year either, but we don't have that information anymore. And so we're not actually able to make any prioritization decisions.
We are, we are planning to bring that. I remember this, it's a five-year report. It has all the projects listed.
Yeah.
The two-year is actually the budget and then the three-years, I actually remember we used to do that before, but we'll, we'll plan to bring that back.
Great. And then, so the, the long-term piece then is, are, do you see that mainly being the Measure G?
Yes. As part of the community investment report, as a Measure G report, we are going to bring this, a list of projects that staff will recommend for funding and council will have to just, you know.
And we would expect that, that some or many of the things on this list?
Some would be like.
Would appear there along with things that might be on the years three, five list?
Yes.
I mean, just.
Not a lot of.
All right, it's not a huge amount of money, but I mean, that's.
Some of it.
All right, so just this Pioneer Bluff Bridge issue, I mean, the one thing that really struck, you know, flew out of me was the scheduling of that, that after the Village Parkway Gregory Jefferson piece, the Stone Gate widening, the, you know, other projects. I mean, I just see a big gigantic train wreck coming when we have completed what will appear to be a bridge to nowhere. If we don't, if we have not said, the connection for so it's no longer to nowhere is the next priority project.
That's the Southport Gateway.
And so the connecting the bridge to Stone Gate seems like that ought to be in 2015. I mean, this is, this is just a projection, but we ought to be planning on that for 2015, '16. If that means moving the Village Parkway Gregory Jefferson or the Stone Gate, you know, one of the other projects to a later year, that, that really needs to be a priority. We open a brand-new bridge to big hoopla and a lot of celebration and then you can't use it.
But you could get to it. You could get to it. You could, you could take a boat and you could get to South River Road.
Yeah, well, build South River Road and the bridge. And then coming from the south, we'll. will have widened Stone Gate, but you will not be able to get from Stone Gate to the bridge.
Stone Gate to the bridge.
So, I just, I, I, that seems to me like a.
2016.
Yeah, I mean, I, that, that one, we ought to, we ought to accelerate that one as much as possible, even if it means moving some of the other projects that are on this list to farther-out years, just because of that timing, I think it's going to be a big, a big problem if we don't get that, that right. And are we, are we already at the point, because of rooftops and other development, where Stone Gate and Palmetti City Bridge widening are required?
It's, it's not at the moment as required. It's just part of the plan, but it's not required at the moment.
All right, so at least for me, I mean, if, to the extent the funds are fungible, to, to extent we get them in the first place, the, the, that, the Pioneer Bluff Bridge connectivity is more important than sort of advanced widening of those two critical facilities, because they're not at capa-, they're not, they don't seem to be at capacity yet, and that bridge is going to be a much, a much higher priority. The other, right, question, so we've got a million bucks sitting in the Westgate, Westcap Streetscape Phase Two budget?
Actually, I'm glad you brought that up. In Fund 264, which is the successor agency fund, since we received the funding of completion, we have the ability to use the bond proceeds, and right now, we have approximately $600,000 in that fund. So, we are planning to go to the Oversight Board with a list of projects. So, one of the projects we are requesting funding is the Sacramento River Crossing, the 115,000, and this is our match for this project. So, all the other projects, we have $2 million in authorization, but we don't have that many, that much in money, so even though the budget is $1 million, but we don't have that money.
Okay. Mr. Johansson?
No, thank you. Yeah, I would agree with the South River Road and pushing that connector up quickly. I mean, we, we know why we're moving faster on that than we anticipated, but either not concurrently or subsequently, that, because that, that is going to be important to make sure that we, sure we're spending money wisely for something that can actually be used. On the ADA compliance, I, I noticed you've got, it's basically 300,000 for the, and you've got everything in general fund, it looks like, Fund 208?
Yes.
For all ADA compliance. And, and so you're, we're going around trying to fix things, the street cuts and all that stuff. So, you've got a couple hundred thousand for, as far as you're forecasting out, how long are you going to be, tell her, is 200,000 going to be allocated?
We have actually, some of them listed in Park Improvement Fund, too, that's a park-related ADA, so, so it's related to that. General Fund is only city facilities, parks, and all that, so I'm, actually, Phil Wright may be the best one to.
Yeah, I'm interested, like, the street cuts, you know, the sidewalks, and, you know, things where we've had problems.
Yeah. Most of the ADA money that we're asking for in the CIP project, CIP budget right now, relate to settlement of a litigation of various things that we have to do in the next five to 10, 15 years. The ADA committee will probably be coming to you later this year, early next year, with an updated transition plan, but really, will probably be a 30-year plan to, again, similar to what the mayor was talking about on priorities, it'll have a list of all the things we have to do, our recommendation for categorizing which are most important, and then the council will be able to direct us as to, no, we think these are more important than these, and we'll try to put them in order. But I, I think we have to plan that for the next, for foreseeable future, we're going to have to be putting a certain amount of money into ADA improvements.
And does that, I mean, I, I think we talked about in the past, does that give us any protection on lawsuits? That shows we've got a plan in place and capital improvement project, program to, to handle this?
Yeah. It, it's not a foolproof sort of protection, but it definitely is protection.
Right.
And we have a plan in place, I want to make that clear. It's not that we don't have a plan, we're just updating our plan, because it needs an updating.
Right, right. All right, thanks.
But this money is really to, to resolve a piece of litigation.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? All right, so you're asking for approval of the plan, but the same, it's a workshop, this, it's workshop, but they're saying if we're in agreement and don't require further information, but you indicated you're going to bring back that other information about the below the line?
The five-year plan, yes.
At the next meeting. So, we would do the same thing, grant.
May I clarify?
Uh-huh?
Okay. Yeah, and approve the two-year budget and bring the plan for council approval.
Your, your mic's not on. Your microphone.
On, on, on item number 19 on the two-year budget. Also, I think, to clarify, bring back the final budget document for council approval, but we would not be able to do that final budget on June 19th. That would be, we'd have to wait for everything to close out, so, Phil, maybe help me out here, but on June 19th, we would simply be asking for a continued resolution, so we can continue to spend, but bring back the final docu-, the budget, once it is prepared for council approval. Does that make sense?
I guess, I mean, we ha-, I, I see, we've approved final budgets prior to the close of the fiscal year before, but if it's just a timing, you know, that it's already mid-June, I mean, that, that, I get, then, yeah, that makes sense.
But Phil, we would not be in a position to have a final budget, detailed budget, available for the council's review in, in June, would we?
No, I, I don't, we would not be in June. So, we'll just do a, a continued resolution, and that will give us to the July meeting to be able to put together the, the final document for your approval. And it won't be the, the full book document, you know, with every, it's, it's the way you've normally seen it, it goes, has the list of all the funds and.
Okay. And then we would.
And with the changes as you.
And we would do the same as, with the CIP, with this, the capital improvement budget, as we're just described, because we'd get the further information at that time.
We can do that.
Okay. But we'd be scheduling that not for an expected two-hour hearing on the, the issues may come up, but we, so I, you don't need to be prepared to do a full.
Right.
Slideshow.
No, no, similar to last time, we, we have the direction, we'll make the adjustments.
Yes, exactly.
We'll simply identify the areas we, the areas we made changes.
Okay.
Consent, is that, is that here?
No, not a consent, no consent.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, so is there a motion then to conceptual, conceptual approval and direct step to bring back the final for, for council approval? All right, move by Mr. Johansson, seconded by Mr. Villegas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, during the motion carries. Thank you. Thanks to, to the department heads and the whole team. Council calendar, Ms. Richardson.
Just real quickly, Mr. Mayor, tomorrow, the Farmers Market opening, it'll, again, it'll be in front of City Hall here, West Capitol Avenue will be closed, starting at 2:30 while the setup takes place, and.
Yeah, we have a Court on Blue Chef, huh?
And that guy from Erie.
I just wanted to point out that on, I think, the 22nd will be the annual.
Carol, can you hear?
The annual open house for Station 44 at 10 o'clock.
All right, any questions? Questions on the calendar?
Yeah, and just finally, just.
All right, sorry.
Not on the calendar is on July 1st, is going to be the Port Day at Riley Field. The invitations for that have not yet gone out, we'll be checking on those and giving those to the council and commissioners soon.
I'd be remiss if, Mr. Tuttle would go crazy if we didn't note that, that also that will be the night that the blue lights on top of the right silos or whatever are going to come on, and it'll be like a little, it'll be like Christmas for Mr. Tuttle.
There you go, thank you very much.
All right, city manager report.
Also, just on the Farmers Market, I wanted to really point out, Ernesto Lozaro's done an incredible job on that Farmers Market, and, and really gone beyond the, any point of efficiency in his time, and it's really done a good job. And also, this morning, the Senate Governance and Finance Committee approved the Atkins bill, that was AB 662, which would allow us to UI, IFDs and redevelopment areas, was approved on a 4-0 vote. Assemblyman Dickinson testified there, added language specifically for the Bridge District, but it was a bipartisan vote, obviously 4-0, goes now to the Senate Appropriations Committee, where Senator Steinberg is a member, so, so far, so good.
Great. All right, questions on the city manager report? City attorney report?
Till it gets to Brown's desk.
After action from members of the council, we have no future agenda requests, is there a motion to adjourn?
We'll move.
Similar by Mr. Kristoff, and seconded by Mr. Villegas. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, during the motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.